To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a crowd again. A quick reminder to silence your cell phones. And I'm going to ask you to bear with me tonight. I just had some laser eye treatments done a couple hours ago, so I'm a little dilated. I might be a little off. If I struggle, I may pass the reading duties over to my cohort, so bear with me. All right, our first order of business, public announcements. Details may be found at www.fairfield-me.gov. All non-emergency town offices will be closed Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th for the Thanksgiving Day holiday. In December, council begins reviewing appointment applications for upcoming volunteer positions on local boards and committees, including the following: Budget Committee, Planning Board, Economic and Community Development Committee, Board of Assessment and Review, Voter Registration Board of Appeals. If you're interested in serving your community, please complete an appointment application form available online or at the town office. Appointments are made at the town council's January annual organizational meeting. Dog licenses are due. Any dogs registered after January 31st, 2026, will receive a $25 late fee per dog. Proof of current rabies vaccination is required. Cops Care for Kids will be Friday, December 19th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Fairfield Community Center. Please sign your child/children up at fairfieldcopscare.com. The town office is hosting a diaper drive. Diapers of all sizes can be dropped off at the town office or food pantry. The deadline is February 1st, 2026. There is still time to sign up for the CERT training in January. Please email info@fairfield-me.gov or call the town office to reserve your spot. I believe we have 20 openings?
Twenty.
Twenty openings for that. Very important. Number seven. To receive alerts for town closures, town meetings, or other important information, to subscribe to alerts on the website under Notify Me. Lawrence Public Library. Community Conversations Tuesdays at 10:30 a.m., Baby Playground Group Friday mornings at 10:30 a.m. Public hearings, we have none. Our third order of business, public comments. Limit will be three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council or request an opportunity to speak on a specific item that is on the agenda, or may email comments for council to info@fairfield-me.gov by 4:00 p.m. Day of the meeting. Submitted content may be read aloud at this time. Do I have anybody that would like to reserve any time for an item on the agenda or make comments at this time? Please step to the podium and give your name and which item you'd like to...
He wants to speak under public comment.
It's not on an agenda item.
Okay.
Do you still want me to give my...
The floor is yours.
Well, thank you. My name is Reverend Peter Roy. I pastor the Fairfield Church of Nazarene right here on Main Street, and I'm also the board president for the Fairfield Interfaith Food Pantry. You all were kind enough and generous enough to give us a donation, and I thought I would give you an update as to where that money went. So, from January of this year till October, we have served 4,351 people from Fairfield. That, and we have served 1,424 families from Fairfield. Per person, we, your money, it has cost you $1.91 per person, and it's cost you $5.85 per family, per month. So, we want to thank you for supporting the pantry. I don't know if you all have ever had a tour of the pantry, but if you'd like one, I'd be happy to show you around. It is a very well-run, very well-utilized pantry. And this last pantry, of course, we had the SNAP issue. We served the same number of families and people that we would serve in a month, in one day. So, and we have pantry coming up tomorrow. It should be a little bit slower, but we'll still serve a lot. But I just wanted to thank you and thought you should know where your $10,000 so far has gone. We are on track to serve between 6,000 and 6,500 people total. Those numbers are all just Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do for our community. We know that need has been scary lately, and we're very fortunate to have you and volunteers that we have. So, continue to do the great work that you do, and thank you very much from all of us.
I have a question for you, sir. If people want to make donations, how best can they do that?
If you want to make a donation, you can send a check to the pantry. And I am working on, because I'm newly minted board president, I'm working on getting an online donation, and we should have that by January, because that's when our next board meeting is, so that we can get that approved. And once that's approved, I will let, you know, people on Facebook World know and different things like that, but we're doing that. And you can also, if you want to do it online and you don't want to wait, you can go to the Fairfield Church of Nazarene website. We have a food pantry where you can give on our tithely, and you can give to the food pantry, and there's no administrative cost. A hundred percent of it goes to, your donation would go to the food pantry.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions before I sit?
I'm just going to reiterate. I've worked with the schools when we started the food pantry at the schools, and they work hand-in-hand through Fairfield Interfaith. You guys sponsor that as well. A lot of people ask about donations, canned goods, and food. The food pantry has such a better buying power than you and I as an individual. So, for instance, if I was to donate a jar of peanut butter, the Reverend's buying power, when I give him that same amount of money, he'd probably buy a case for what I can buy one jar. So, that's why, to make your dollar go further, that donation directly to the pantry, to the Church of Nazarene, that's the best way to make your dollar stretch the most. As he just noted, I mean, they're feeding families for $5 a month. It's amazing. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to reserve any time?
I just had a Mark Williamson live in Fairfield Center. I had one thing that I've been mulling about for a while is, and I'm sure you know about, is the intersection of the Davis Road, what is it, Ten Lots, Six Rod, and Mountain Stream. You guys, anybody who goes out there knows, it's a crapshoot if somebody's going to stop or not. We've almost been hit probably two or three times a month out there, and we're on the straightaway, and you always got to slow rate down. So, I didn't know how I would go about seeking, maybe getting a study into a four-way stop at that intersection. I know there's been quite a few bad accidents there, so...
Yeah, as a lifelong resident on that road, is that something we could ask Chief Gould, Michelle?
Yeah, so in the past, when we've had these, we've asked the police department and the public works department to take a look at those areas. There's something that tells me that we've looked at this area before, but I'd have to go back and get that information anyway. We certainly can pass that along and have that looked at.
Okay.
With it newly paved, it's probably worse now. I know we just did the Norwich Walk Road and...
Yeah, the only part that has been paved out there is from the start of the Mountain Stream Road down to Davis, I think.
Yeah.
But everything else is pretty nice in through there, so people are moving. I've caught myself moving through there before. I've actually been stopped in there before. It's just you don't think about it, but...
I think it's 35 through there, hits the hill, but you...
And when you're coming up, I mean, just not, a couple weeks ago, I was in my truck, and Serena was with me, and I saw a woman come right up to the stop sign from Ten Lots, look right at me, and then drive right out in front of me. I had to stop, or else I would have run right into her.
Yeah, they may think it's a four-way if they're not.
Yeah, so...
We will absolutely ask Chief Gould, and Tom and Captain Saini man are out that way as well.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
I'm sure something they will address for us, so...
One other quick thing that I forgot is, I noticed the state put the rumble strips out on 139 there, down by the middle road and all through there, and I just, they don't seem like having them rumble strips on each side and the middle is enough. Have, could we talk to them about maybe putting rumble strips across the road before you get to that intersection to kind of wake people up? I know a lot of places do that, you know, on the interstate, stuff like that, when you're coming into a congested area. Just a thought.
No, we can absolutely ask.
There was another accident out there tonight, wasn't there?
Yes.
There was, yeah.
So...
So, it's across 139 out near the middle road?
Right.
That intersection.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, that one down at the bottom of the hill that's been so bad.
We can always ask.
Even, you know, a few lines of rumble strips would, might wake some people up.
Did we ask for a light at that intersection, Michelle?
You can ask for a light, and they say you'd be more than happy to have one. You need to buy it as a municipality. You need to put it up. You need to maintain it and insure it and pay for it.
All right, thank you.
Might be something we need to do. Thank you, Mark. Anybody else with any comments or would like to reserve time on a specific item? Okay, I do have three emails from concerned citizens. I'd like to read aloud. It was addressed to the entire board, so council. This is the time where I think we should address that. We didn't address them individually, since it was addressed to the whole council in order of transparency. This is where we do our work, so I think this is where these should be read aloud and discussed. So, on Saturday, October 25th, we received an email from Alan Barney Dyer. "I am writing to respectfully inquire about the status of the identification lettering for a fire chief's vehicle. My understanding is that the vehicle has been in service since before town meeting, having been stored at the fire station at the center prior to that time. During a recent meeting, Council Kitchen raised this matter, and it was communicated that the chief was actively engaged in developing a design for lettering, although Chairman Martin expressed his personal satisfaction that the vehicle was in use without any lettering. The ongoing absence of official identification remains a point of concern for some members of the community. The lack of official lettering could inadvertently convey the impression that the vehicle is a private asset rather than municipal property. This particularly relevant, given its reported use in mutual aid scenarios, such as with Clinton fires, where clear Fairfield identification is crucial for operational clarity and public recognition. The timeline for finalizing and applying the design, which has reportedly been in progress since May, appears to be prolonged. I would appreciate clarification regarding any unforeseen challenges or delays in this process. Given that previous Fairfield Fire Department vehicles have utilized established lettering designs effectively, particularly with black vehicles where white or red lettering options are typically visible, I would appreciate an understanding of the rationale behind potentially altering existing branding or the specific challenges involved with the particular vehicle. Furthermore, this situation prompts questions regarding the anticipated process and the timeline for lettering of the new ambulance to ensure swift and efficient employment once it arrives. Could you please provide an update on the expected completion date for the vehicle's lettering and clarify the current status of the design application process? Thank you, Alan Barney Dyer." Before I go on to the next two emails, I'd like for us to discuss this particular one and address it as may be. I was asked about the lettering specifically in a text message that I had answered. I would look into it at the time. Chief was on vacation, and I had asked if they'd ask the town office or the chief, because that's how the day-to-day operations of our town work, each department. If you've got a question, our department heads are very knowledgeable, very approachable, and I know I've never had a complaint, but they haven't been. So, that was the way I had addressed it. I have since sat with Michelle this week. I know a design has been mocked up and done. I believe we're waiting for approval to request the spending for that wrap to be done. So, we have a process that's been done. It's completed. We're just waiting to schedule a time to get it in. Like any government function, things just take time. In this particular case, I guess I would likely to have an accident with a vehicle and trying to get into a repair shop. We're at the mercy of the people who letter and design these apparatuses, and Michelle, can you elaborate a little bit?
Well, I can add a little bit to that. So, if you remember, we purchased the fire chief's vehicle with ARPA funds, and we only allotted the funds for the purchase of the vehicle. So, there were other components that needed to be done with that vehicle, such as upfitting for its radio systems, that sort of stuff, and the lettering. We didn't appropriate any money for that at the time. The fire department's budget last fiscal year was so tight that we, we know when all the dust settles, we're going to have to use some contingency to cover that budget. It went over. The lettering of this truck, because it is so different, most, we use different companies over the years for various different vehicles and different departments. The police department's vehicles have had the same mock-up for some time. It's quick. The design is done. Same company. Cost us approximately $600 to $700 for that application, basically the ghost lettering that they put on there. This is putting a red band down the side of the vehicle because it is black. Most of our lettering on our trucks is black, so we would need to have that stand out. The lettering will be gold. The first company we worked with never arrived to do any measurements or meet with us, so we had to look for a new vendor. We did able to get Davis Vinyl, which they're across the river in Benton, so that's great. It's a Benton community that's doing it. There is a check on tonight's warrant to pay the first half, which we have to put half down. It is a $3,400 cost for the lettering of this truck, so half will need to be paid. Once they get their half, they'll order the supplies. Then, once it's applied, we'll be able to put the rest on. So, this was done in the process of trying to handle everything else with hiring new staff. It does take time in order to ensure that we get the right possible cost and the right value when we're looking at $3,400, you know, for lettering on the side of a truck. So, that is one of the reasons why it takes time. In regards to the ambulance, that will be lettered when we take delivery. Most of our trucks usually are. When they arrive, they are done by the folks that have them. That's done ahead of time. This is just a different situation.
So, the ambulance, same design?
I don't, it's not exactly the same design, but it's similar.
Okay.
It's similar, because the ambulance is already red.
Yeah.
Right.
And I know they're anxious to get it to us because they want to get paid.
So, what, we ended up, the chief redesigned the emblem, the door emblem, the seal, and he's talking with them about what the cost would be to have additional seals made up so that over time, we can add, swap out the ones that are currently on our trucks so that they do ultimately match, so...
So, these will be vinyl wraps for those that are interested, and if they have them on hand, it might speed up the process when we do the next vehicles, so...
Yeah, they had to design this, do the design by scratch, because we had nothing digital onsite, so...
Thank you. Any council members want to add any questions from that email? I think that handles it pretty well. Okay. All right, on October 26th, the following day on a Sunday, it says, "Dear all, I propose a significant enhancement to the comprehensive information provided for council meetings. In observing the operational practices of various surrounding municipal planning and council boards, including Skowhegan, I have noted a commendable approach to public documentation. These entities consistently include detailed background materials and supporting documents, such as comprehensive reports or in-depth explanations for warrants directly within the publicly accessible agenda packets. The practice provides invaluable context and clarity for the warrant on the agenda. With the recent launch of the new website, which offers expanded capabilities for digital dissemination and our unwavering commitment to increasing transparency and improving information accessibility for our taxpayers, I believe this is an opportune moment to consider adopting a similar strategy. Therefore, I request that this level of detail be included in the supporting documentation for this agenda item. Implementing this would not only align with our transparency goals, but also empower our community members within a deeper understanding of the matters under discussion and decision-making. I've attached the agenda of the Skowhegan's upcoming meeting. Please take note from pages 50 to 77. Thank you for consideration, Bonnie and Al Dyer." As traditional, our warrant is always read at our next scheduled meeting. Not knowing what the last payment is going to be in that given week, so I guess my assumption is that we've always waited to the last minute to include as many payments as possible so that they don't sit there for two or three weeks. So, that's why our warrant process is the way it is. Michelle, could you elaborate a little bit more?
So, the warrant itself, we stop processing bills sometimes as late as 2:00 in the afternoon the day is of a council meeting, which is why when the original agenda gets posted on Thursday or Friday, it doesn't have a dollar amount in it or the numbers in it, because we don't know what that's going to be. So, we do process all of our invoices right up until the last minute on the day of the council meeting. So, again, we're not paying interest, those sort of things, because a lot of companies now do not like the idea that they would provide a service and then not get paid for 14 days. So, it, and it has become a, we get calls all the time when bills are late. We could certainly scan the warrant and post it after the council meeting, what have you, but there's no way we could include it in a council meeting packet prior to the meeting. They are here. They are on site the day of the meeting. Anybody is more than welcome to look at it. We bring all of the invoices for that warrant. It is here, and anybody can ask at any point in time, and we can provide it. It has never been something that Fairfield has done. A lot of it probably has been to the fact that it's a large document, and our old website would not have handled it. But if the council wants it posted on the website, we can certainly do that. But there's no way we could have it ready for you. Well, we could. We would just have to stop cutting checks a week prior to, which would lead to late fees and additional costs. It's up to you.
Well, I think we should avoid the late fees and the additional costs.
We get to see the summary of it. If you want to see what went into that, that's what we can ask, and anybody else can ask for that. When I looked at the information that was provided us, it really was Skowhegan's, pretty much their check register, essentially. Every check that had been written, every payment that had been made over the last month. So, I mean, if you want that detail, it's available, and we have the totals along that line, but...
I mean, my only comment is going to be, I guess we could post it the day of the meeting. I wouldn't want it to go out with council packet, but if it's, I don't think it's a lack of transparency. It's more of stuffing as much into it at the last minute so that people aren't waiting for their money to get paid, and we're not hitting late fees. I don't think it's a lack of transparency on our part for anything, and, you know, the website has more capabilities, but other than posting it on 2:00 of the day of the meeting...
And that's right, so it can be as late as 4:00.
4:00, okay.
And then that has to do with the availability of the town clerk's availability to post it, because the person who generates the warrant isn't the person who posts anything on the website. So, we could do it so that if it's available the day of the meeting, we can post it then, once it's done, or it ends up being the next day or what have you. I mean, we can get it up there as soon as we can, as long as you want us to continue the practice of getting as many in before this meeting as we can, so...
Can you, like, post a ledger saying, okay, pay date? So, I don't know what residents want. Okay, they want it before, but you pay it late. Can you just put it like a, saying, okay, we're paying this on this date? I don't know if that will satisfy...
It doesn't work that way. So, technically, everything on the warrant is paid as of, is being paid as of today.
Okay.
Because we haven't signed a warrant.
So, we process invoices for, from the minute one warrant ends, we start working on the next one. It's constant when you have as many departments as we do. But, so you can do data entry at any point in time, but then, once you run the check warrant and you run the checks, it closes that out. Its date of payment is considered the date that it is approved, so it's today, and that's right on the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I probably think what the residents want, saying, okay, when it's being paid.
So, while you see a warrant number, the report also, when it comes out, has the date of when it was done.
Okay.
And do you, I mean, do you want to have something on a link the next day? I mean, it's what we approved. That's available.
I think we're still being transparent, and we're being more accurate by waiting, and as long as, as good intentions on getting it posted as soon as possible, I think we're doing our job.
We can do that.
I think that'd be helpful. I think it's a good compromise.
Yeah.
And getting it out there, but also...
Nobody's ever asked for it before, and like we've said, it's here all the time. It comes to every single meeting when you sign it. That, the document that you sign at the end of the meeting is the warrant, and all the documentation sits right in that basket to back it up, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, if Brittany has time before she comes here and it can get posted on the website, for those that can't be here, that want to follow the warrant as we're doing it, you know, I always say, please add it. I'm not going to be adamant about it.
I'm just, see, I read it a little bit different. I read, as far as the warrants are concerned, in-depth explanations. I read that as when we are reading the agenda on what the warrant is to elaborate a little more on what we're spending on.
So, we've always given...
Based on what Skowhegan had, what was presented, and what seemed to be the concern, pretty much those pages that are listed, it's pretty much line item of every expense over the last, from between their last meeting and that meeting. So, I'm not sure if that was the...
Those particular pages?
Yeah.
So, are you thinking of Kevin, the expense summary report, being more in-depth? We could, it's this thing?
I don't know. I don't know what they're referring to. That's just how I...
And that just tells people what's been expended to date?
Yeah, the, I mean, the expect summary is, we've got a budget, and this lists in detail how much we have spent to date on each of those items. So, I don't know what more we can do to be more transparent going forward or more itemized. When we read the warrant, it's going to be to include, you know... When we read the warrant, it's going to be to include, you know, X amount of individuals or departments or businesses that we've caught.
What's posted on the warrant, when you read that total, is the five biggest allotments that we're paying.
The four, yeah, four biggest ones.
Bad 49, motor vehicles, fuel, and.
And Employment Health Trust. Boy, Health Trust.
You know, I mean, this one's going to have salt company, motor vehicle fees, and, you know.
But the warrant, so the way the warrant is listed, it's listed by vendor.
Yeah.
And then it lists the account number, and it lists the dollar amount, and usually a description of what the product is that we've purchased is, that's what's all listed in the warrant. It's different than the expense summary sheet that you received tonight at the meeting. It's a different document, but we can, we can certainly get that posted. We'll do that.
So we're in agreement that we'll try to get it listed by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting? But if not.
I will try. Sometimes I'm working on council stuff up until I leave at 4:30, so I'm not going to make promises it's going to be that day, but definitely the day after, for sure.
I think in transparency, that's fair, and thank you. Council good with that? Any other comments? Okay, one more email. Tuesday, November 4th. "I am writing, I'm writing to provide some observations and reflections following my thorough review of the recent council meetings pertaining to the Fairfield and Benton matter. I have carefully watched the proceedings, both live and through subsequent reexamination of specific segments, particularly those involving council discussions. My primary concerns, which I believe warrants your collective consideration, pertains to the collaborative dynamics observed during certain exchanges. It leads me to respectfully suggest that investing in team-building workshops could be highly advantageous in cultivating a more cohesive and mutually supportive environment amongst the council members. Specifically, I noted that the particular concern, the interactions surrounding Councilor Kitchen's request for a feasibility study, it appeared that the legitimate inquiries aimed at ensuring comprehensive and due diligence and a thorough understanding of proposals before committing to significant town initiatives were not met with constructive engagement and respect one expects in a public forum. The ensuing discussion, particularly Council Martin's response, seemed to adopt a tone that hindered rather than facilitated a productive dialogue. Furthermore, I found it concerning how the existence of an already completed study, which Council Kitchen was seeking information on, was eventually brought to light by Michelle and Peter. While the provision of this information was ultimately helpful, and the context and presentation, including the accompanying laughter, inadvertently created an impression of public disparagement of a council member's legitimate inquiry. The dynamic, intended or not, undermines the principle of mutual support and professional conduct among elected officials and can be perceived as an attempt to publicly diminish a colleague's contribution. I found Tim Martin's tone to be argumentative and demeaning. I feel that he didn't even know a study had been done either. Effective governance relies heavily on a council's operating as a unified body, where all members feel respected, informed, and empowered to contribute fully. It is crucial that questions, particularly those seeking fundamental data and thorough analysis, are welcomed and addressed transparently and professionally. The integrity of the decision-making process is significantly strengthened when all perspectives are given due consideration, and no member feels intentionally excluded or undermined. Although Council Kitchen is the junior member of the council, he deserves as much respect as the rest of the council. Council Kitchen consistently demonstrates a commitment to asking probing questions and ensuring accountability qualities that are vital to a robust civic leadership. Rather than being perceived as adversarial, such as diligent inquiries, should be embraced as integral to a thorough and responsible government process. He is not one to sit there and just rubber stamp everything. I strongly encourage the council to actively work towards integrating all members' contributions, ensuring they are fully informed and their diligence is supported as a matter of course. I firmly believe by investigating, by investing in strategies to enhance internal communication, foster a spirit of mutual respect, and strengthen collaborative practices, the council can significantly improve its overall effectiveness, decision-making, quality, and public perception. Thank you for considering these reflections."
So Bonnie and Al.
From Bonnie and Al Dyer. So I would, I would like the rest of the board, I'd like to ask Council Kitchen if he, if he feels, I guess I would say, my demeanor is derogatory, or that your contributions are not taken thoroughly, or.
The, the one thing, and I have to say for record, the very next day, you gave me a phone call and we talked, we talked about this. I would say during the meeting, yes, I was frustrated when you told me I was getting ahead of myself, where I wasn't. I felt like you were cutting me off, but we talked about that over the phone, and we resolved each other's perspectives. And, you know, I think that's just the personalities that we both have. I'm not going to, you know, I'm going to continue to ask the hard questions and, you know, challenge the assumptions. I don't, I don't know.
So I, you know, I'm always going to take criticism to heart. I'm not going to be perfect, I'll tell you that. That was a particular instance, we were talking about our meeting with Benton, when we're trying to figure out what we would like to do with our emergency services. We moved forward, Delta has forced us into some circumstances that are, they're not our doing, but we have to address them, and we need to address the needs of our fire and emergency management services. I'm still new to the council as well, it's my first year. That particular instance, we had had some discussions a couple months or a few months beforehand, but it was prior to Council Kitchen not being on the council at that time, so when he mentioned that, you know, the light bulb went off, that he wasn't privy to the prior information. I did take it upon myself the very next day to apologize to Kevin. I ruffled Council Thibodeau's feathers once earlier in the year. That's what these meetings are for. I personally take everybody's opinion into great deal of respect, and I think about them. I'll honestly tell you, I've never watched a tape version of our meetings. I don't live my life with rearview mirrors. I will accept responsibility when I'm wrong, I will apologize, I will do better to not do them. But I like the dialogue that our council has. Council Kitchen brings a great wealth of knowledge. He is thorough on anything that he asks. And when we have disagreements, it shows that we don't rubber stamp things. We do listen to each other. We all have different ideas, but we're all here for the same reasons, and that's what's in the best interest of the town. Their items, we have voted on, that I have been the tie-breaking vote, that I voted in what's in favor of the town, not in my best interest. And that's what a council member's supposed to do. We don't meet for lunch, we don't go to breakfast, we don't see each other out in the community. When there are three of us that are going to be at a specific event, it is made sure the public knows that we are going to be there. We wear different hats as council members, so it's very hard, but in transparency, this is where we do our work. This is where that dialogue and those discussions are going to happen. There's going to be disagreement, there's going to be different tone, depending on what the subject matter is, but it does not mean that I do not, personally, I do not have any disrespect for my council members. And I think everybody here is comfortable enough to tell me when I'm wrong. We can apologize, pat on the back, move forward. We, I think we work fantastic together as this five-unit member. Last year when we ran, there were seven or eight people running for two positions. This year, there were three openings and three people running, and it's been fantastic. I really enjoyed what we've accomplished so far this year, so, you know, to address this specific email, I'm going to say, yeah, my tone is going to be maybe not correct at times. I'm not perfect, I'm not going to pretend to be. I don't know everything, I have a full-time job, this is not my full-time job. When I have questions, I ask the town manager, or I will go through the town manager to ask department heads. We all have the ability to get the information we need. There is a great deal of information. You cannot expect a council member to know everything, but it is our importance to make sure we have the correct information in front of us when we vote on things that affect the town. And I think we do that very well, and I think we do it transparently. So again, if my tone or demeanor at any time has made a citizen feel derogatory, or that I do not respect my fellow cohorts on this council, I apologize, I will do better. But I don't, I don't feel that's the way we feel about each other, so. Thank you for the email. If you guys would like to address that email or my tone towards any of you, I think this is a good opportunity to do it.
I'm comfortable with it. I have sat in that chair, and I, are times when going through the process, kind of thrown into it, and you can say things that you would rather have said a different way, and I've gotten better in my older age, that occasionally ask why. So like, in that head, we all knew, like, there's been an audit, right? Kevin, like, in our heads, like, I'm sure Kevin knows that. So we're making an assumption, and what, you know, happens when you make assumptions. And so then, also should have been, I've learned much better to ask why. So like, why is Kevin asking that question? Oh, maybe. That's, that's all the questions, you know, that we should probably ask, is a lot, a lot of times when this, when we're confused by a, you know, by a statement, ask why. And so I think we do a pretty good job of that on this, on this council, of asking why and trying to understand, and just everybody's opinions are valid, and then we may not share them, but they're at least valid. I think we do a really good job, so I appreciate you all.
And I think, you know, I have to, I've been here for 11 years, and I'm very much impressed with how we do work as a group, and that we do respect individual differences, and that it is okay to disagree with each other. I feel very fortunate as a citizen of this town to have a group like us working for the benefit of our future. And I think that, you know, it's, it's something that we should be not taking for gratitude, not taking, you know what I mean?
Yes.
But we should be very grateful for, so I thank you all.
So I just want to adjust, the, part of the email also said maybe some, some training. Again, when three councilors meet, that considers a quorum, it's not something we do. We rely heavily on our town manager as our employee for the experience and expertise and the laws that we need to know to keep us out of trouble from, from doing the things we're not supposed to do. MMA does provide some training. We have, we have done some different types of training. There are courses that they put on that we do have the ability to take advantage of, some have. Again, time constraints, you know, this is pretty much a volunteer job for most of us, and I think we work very well together, I really do. I don't, like having brothers and sisters, you just don't get along all the time, and that's okay, that's, that's what it's supposed to be about. And it should give the town some relief to know that we don't rubber stamp things, we don't all agree on everything all the time. Case in point would be hiring three new firemen this year. The townsfolk made it adamantly clear that that was important, and they wanted it. And I did not want to even put it on the budget, so I was overruled. So that's case in point where democracy works, it has worked, it will work, that's what we're here for. It wasn't that I didn't want the firemen, it was that I didn't know how we want to pay for it. So again, we're there, our people have spoken, and because of the council like this, it went on our, our warrant as a voted item, and it got voted through. So that's a good, good example to show where we may not always agree, but in the end, we do what's best for the town, so. All right, thank you for those emails. Are there any other comments before we move on? Sorry for being so long-winded, but I think they were very eloquent and elaborate emails, and I wanted to address them. The reason we didn't address them individually, it was addressed to all five of us, and I think this, being transparent, this is the forum where we discuss those things, so. Thank you. Okay, fourth order of business, business reports from staff and committees, town managers' report.
All right, I'm going to apologize right now because it's a little long, but it's been a while since we've met, so I'll try to make it quick. October 23rd, I attended the Somerset Economic Development Corporation's quarterly board meeting. It was held at the spinning mill in Skowhegan. If folks haven't been there yet, it's a great place to go see what they've done over there, it's beautiful. Discussions included updates on their revolving loan funds for various different businesses throughout the county, broadband expansion projects through Somerset County, and the future of the four dams. October 27th, I met with Sean Wallace, who is the VP of Research Development and Sustainability at SAPI. We discussed the impact of the loss of the Shama Dam and its impoundment area, which is the area water above the dam, and how it could impact SAPI's operations. It is predicted that the water levels near SAPI could drop almost 19 feet and will leave their water intake pipe approximately eight feet above water. So a plan to correct this issue is actively being worked on, but we, he, SAPI wanted to make sure that Fairfield was definitely aware of what the impact was to their mill. And there's some more stuff that happened later on that I'll get to. And then also, on the 27th, attended the building committee's tour of the Skowhegan Public Safety Building, which Councillor Lawrence will speak more about. October 28th, attended the building committee's tour of the Newport Public Safety Building. October 29th, attended the joint meeting of the Fairfield Council and Benton Selectman. The date of your next joint meeting is still undetermined. While I heard from all of our council, we have not heard back from Benton, but I did get an update from them. They did receive their letter of approval from DECD on their TIF. They're meeting Monday, and this is a topic of discussion for their workshop and their council meeting, and they said they would get back to us about a date for our next meeting after that meeting, so progress is still being made. October 30th, I attended the KRDA Design Review Committee meeting. The solar project for Novel Energy on lots 19 through 22 has finally been approved and is able to go forward. They had been waiting on some DEP permit amendments, which is good, that's more tax revenue that will be going to all the member municipalities, and also facilitated some interviews for the executive director's position. November 3rd, attended an informal tour of SAPI. The, the discussion did focus on the impact of the Shama Dam removal of operations, there were legislators there, Maine State Chamber of Commerce, all of the various surrounding municipalities. November 5th, attended Economic Community Development Committee meeting, Councillor Thibodeau will tell you about that. Attended the ICE Arena Steering Committee meeting after that, Councillor Martin will tell you about that. November 6th through the 16th, I did go on vacation. The 17th, attended the Environmental Hazards Committee, Councillor Townsend can tell you about that. October 18th, attended KBCOG's Board of Directors meeting. Topics of discussion included assisting municipalities with new state reporting requirements regarding building permit activity, possibility of the addition of heating oil prices to their joint purchasing options, and what take, role the facility may take regarding municipalities as it relates to the dam removal process. If you don't know, joint purchasing is one of the biggest things that we use KBCOG through, it's for culverts, we could use them for salt prices, they do paper, they do all kinds of different things. It's a huge, huge buying power with all of their member municipalities, and saves us a lot of money. And then, so there's looking like we'll get another bit of financing through the state, similar to like what happened with LD 2003. It is for revisions on LD 1892. If folks haven't been following this, it is an act to build housing for Maine families and attract workers to Maine businesses by amending the laws governing housing density. Basically, this LD does what 2003 does and enro, and overrides the Home Rule Authority. It will override aspects of municipal shoreline zoning, height restrictions, density requirements, lot sizes, fire protection, limits planning board's approval on four or fewer dwelling, dwelling requirements in one structure, meaning the law specifically says that if you have a new development in town and it is four or fewer apartments in that one building, a planning board cannot review that project. So there are amendments to come. This is essentially a state override, like I said, of Home Rule Authority, and we do anticipate some changes going forward and potentially some funding. Also, that day, I attended the building committee meeting, which Councillor Lawrence can also tell you. And then today, attended the Central Maine Growth Council's Board of Directors meeting. Discussions included overview of staffing updates, funding sources, and potential new business developments in the region, including housing, shared information regarding the economic development activities with our municipal partners, so there's some great things going on around. Oakland's doing a lot of wonderful things with the ATV trail access, if you're not aware, and tying in with the trail system we have here. It's not on the sheet that I gave you, but I think it bears mentioning. A lot of. it bears mentioning. A lot of the partners that I've listed here, that we meet with and that assist us in all the things we do, are very heavily dependent upon federal funding. And it was very visible these last two days, especially with KVCOG yesterday, and the Growth Council today, how nervous everybody was about this. Because while they may have already been awarded grants, when the federal government shuts down, that funding is not available to them. So the way it works is you're having allotment, and then you have to go do a drawdown. And they didn't have access to any of those funds, while they still had to provide payroll and all of those things. So I think it's always important for us to keep in mind, you know, what kind of impact these things have on our partners as well. So. And then, just some quick updates. Department heads have received their spreadsheets and are working on next year's budget process. And then, also, you received in your mailboxes an updated appointment application from Chris Perry, that you had requested back at the time when he was appointed, you wanted some updated information. So, that is it.
I have a question, Michelle.
Sure.
So, LD 1892 that you were talking about, the, there's a lot, I know there's a lot to digest here, and I know we'll be looking at it a lot further. I read this as the state is attempting to cut a lot of red tape.
In some instances, yes.
And, so I guess my question would be, we would, it would probably behoove us to make sure that once this comes out, and we figure that out, that maybe we take a look at our ordinances?
So the planning board is already working on that. They've actually already requested the cost of KVCOG's assistance with ordinance amendments to shoreline zoning and subdivision. They haven't been amended in quite some time, to the point that our shoreline zoning ordinance is actually an Excel spreadsheet document, and not even a Word document. So what we're, it's on hold at the moment, because we do need to see what the LD does, and if the funding comes in. So when we did LD 2003, and we had to make those changes to land use, we received $10,000. They sent the money direct. We contracted with KVCOG. They took roughly 85, 87% of that. We had the remainder of the funds in case we needed legal review and document production after the final, and you know, and to pay for public hearings and all of that for those ordinance amendments. But this is on their radar.
Okay.
But I realized we hadn't really talked about it publicly here in this setting, and wanted to make sure it got mentioned.
Thank you.
Because there will be more to come on this. I know that they're already working on some fixes for this bill in the next legislative session, because it is, it's pretty big. But, some of it doesn't really apply to our municipality, because we just don't have the housing density. But there are municipalities out there that are so populated, that they limit the amount of building permits that they'll issue in any given year. It affects those sorts of things. And, you know, but there are pieces that have been implemented that a lot of people don't realize. It used to be for every apartment building structure, you had to have at least one parking space available for them. The laws have changed, that it's no longer a requirement. So what happens to the people that do live in these apartments? Well, then they end up parking on the side of the road. Which, if you live in a sunshiny, bright, non-snowy area, that's okay. But in the state of Maine, and especially rural Maine, that's not. And where do those people go when they can't park on the side of the road? So, they're very real things that we need to look at. But, there are fixes being worked on, and the amendments will be forthcoming. So know, this spring into the summer, you'll be looking at some public hearings and ordinance amendments.
Thing with code enforcement, too, I know bill improvements, things like that, I know code enforcement takes care of that, that affects code enforcement, too.
Well, yeah, it does. Yeah, so it, well, the code enforcement officer only enforces our ordinances, right? So if it overrides our ordinance, then it would dictate exactly what, what the code enforcement officer needs to do. The reporting requirements are our big deal now, with the information that the state wants, for a lot of municipalities, because some municipalities don't even have building permits. We are looking into some software that will help us track building permits a lot better. And we actually have a meeting next week to look at that for a potential budget request for next year. But, all good things.
Sounds like a takeover saying, "We don't care about you, we're going to take over everything." So that's what it sounds like.
It is what it sounds like. And in some instances, so overriding home rule is, you know, home rule is sacred to municipalities in the state of Maine. They like to have control over the municipalities, what happens in their backyard. It's not something that the state of Maine has done very often, but is starting to become more common. It's changed, and sometimes it's lack of understanding of how processes already work, which is why there's been a lot more outreach in the last couple of years with legislative folks, to get them to understand how municipalities actually operate. So, it's good.
Thank you.
Just have another question about the town manager's update. On the community center, I know she's done a fantastic job outlining the new information on what, what's coming to the community center. My question is, too, the, the money factor she put in, is that collected for the month, or that per year so far?
That was for the month.
For the month. And the updates, what updates is she talking about for the community center updates?
What do you mean?
The facilities?
Yeah.
Facility updates?
Yeah.
It just says, "Maintenance completed, repairs, cleaning, upgrades, liability insurance for all events instituted this."
Are they looking at any issues with the building, or is that?
No more than we ever do, right? So.
Because I know the bill in the assessment committee, before the building committee did mention something, to try to upgrade the community center, for, to make it better looking, and more, more efficient. So I'm just wondering if she's looking at that, too, so.
May, or may not be, a very sizable grant that's out there in the world, that we may or may not have been awarded, that I can't talk about.
Okay. Just checking. That's my question.
I just want to comment on, we get great reports from our department heads, very, very detailed. Community Center went with Bethany, it's fantastic this month. List all the events that we had for the month, the amount of revenue that was taken in. We had a complaint during election about lighting out front, I mentioned with Michelle. Are we looking at what we can do?
We are, and actually, I was supposed to look at it after I left one of our last meetings and forgot, so don't let me forget tonight to look at that entrance. I think the light that's in the parking lot was always designed to shine towards this building. I think it's moved. I need to look at it tonight.
Okay.
Or it may be that it's not working properly, because it was designed so that it lit up that walkway. There is a light that comes down over the door. That light switch might not have been on that day.
It's not as bad when it's dark.
Yeah.
So if we leave at eight, nine o'clock, lighting's different than twilight. So I know coming in, I checked it again today, we could do something a little more visible, so somebody doesn't miss a step, miss that sidewalk. So if we can look at it before we leave.
We've been working on, yeah, that, and some, it may be that the light, when we replaced it to LEDs, just isn't, it's just not the right line.
Yeah. And some of the studies that Steph had worked on with economic development, the community center took some of that feedback. They're looking for more community event offers. It's in, it's in the report. I just want to read it aloud, so everybody that doesn't see it knows. Some upcoming plans and goals that they have, they're, they're looking for more facility upgrades, partnerships, increased participation. But they started creating a list of possible new community center offerings. I like this. This is what we need to hear. This is what's going to help our community grow, give people more things to do. So some of the things that she's listed, bingo, winter walking, toddler open gym, adult basketball open gym, movie nights, and, and working on getting some of these things into production. So if you have any ideas, I would contact the town office, and, and let those ideas be known. If, if any of these come through fruition, it would be fantastic.
Well, winter walking actually was implemented in November, which is why it's not in your October report. But I think it's like three days a week, some specific times. There's a sign-up sheet out here, so they make sure that the gym is just completely open. It's not booked or anything, and, and it's, it's on our Facebook page. And is it on the website, too?
Yeah.
On the website, too? I think there's actually a sign on the front door here, too, for it.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Yep.
And I think it goes hand in hand, and some of the work Steph's been working with, with those surveys, and, you know, this is what we need to hear, what our community needs to do, for, for our Grange members that are on the council. I'd love to see that same type of thing. I'd like to see bingo out there.
Again?
Well, I just think it will help make these buildings more viable, with a little more revenue coming in.
Okay, with, with bingo, I'm just wondering, would it affect the other two establishments, VFW in the Legion, if they have that already?
Yeah, I think we have to find out.
Yeah.
They do them, the other communities around us, they're just.
Are they going to merge?
But they're great, I mean, they're great ideas, and they're, and they're revenue generating. The other thing that Bethany mentioned is, we do have our liability requirement for insurance when renting this facility. Now that went into full place this month as well.
Yeah, I talked to the person that did it on Sunday, it wasn't that much.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, I talked to Mike. He said he got it that day. He thought it was going to be a lot, it wasn't.
Great.
It was, so.
So, good, won't be a deterrent to people.
Right, right.
It'll just cover.
Just got to find the right place to get it, so.
Yep. And, all that information, I believe, is, is it on our website?
It is now.
Yep. So as they, they want to rent the community center, those affordable insurance options are there, so.
I just have another question. I'm being used by some of these vendors for information, since I know I'm a councillor. Is the password on the registration, when they pass out?
The Wi-Fi password?
The Wi-Fi password?
Yes.
No.
Is it on there, or displayed within the hall, or, or the door?
I thought it was on the application.
I don't think it's on the new one.
Because I'm being asked a lot on my time off.
Because it used to be on, I think it used to be on the application. It was on a sheet that they picked up when they picked up the key, I think is what it was.
Because, uh.
We'll double check, though.
Because on some locations, I do, my events, they have it posted.
Just have it posted.
They have it posted.
And it might be worth putting a poster in here.
Okay. Any other, any other committee questions? All right, how's it, Thibodeau? Let's start with economic development.
Well, we met at the beginning of the month, and our focus was working on the vision for the downtown redevelopment plan. That should be ready to come to council. We were planning on next month, but we only have one meeting in December, so it might be in January. We had also planned on working on the town farm proposal, and doing a SWOT analysis, but because of the length of the vision process, that was tabled. So, in, on December 2nd, at 3:30, we're meeting in here. It's going to be a very busy meeting. We have some people coming in that create plans for, like, playgrounds, and, and this would be for Mill Island Park. We're going to listen to what they have to say. We're also going to put our final stamp of approval on the downtown redevelopment plan, and I don't know if we'll be able to get to the town farm situation or not, but that will be on the schedule, too. But, we meet usually from 3:30 to about 5:30, and usually, there's another meeting at 6:00, so.
That's what I was just looking at, because we're coming in at 6 o'clock.
Yeah. So, we can't dilly-dally, so that's why the town farm's being tabled. But, with the new year coming up, it is going to be a focus of our attention, so.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to circle back around on ECDC, because economic development. Michelle, in the code enforcement report, we've got a, a commercial building permit. Can you address that one, or do you want to leave that for later?
I don't dare tell you exactly which one it is.
Okay.
I don't know if the folks that purchased the lot for the Dunkin' Donuts came in to get their permit, or not. I'm not sure.
All right.
But.
Maybe next month.
I can find out for, for sure, if you would like. Oh, yes, under commercial, it says "One Dunkin' Building."
Yeah.
So I'm relatively certain that's what it is. So that's the lot that's across the street from the VFW, that they had been working on, that they were permitted for already through the planning board. So, it had experienced a bit of a hiccup, and fortunately, one of our residents, Jeremy Gordon, purchased the lot, got it all cleaned up for them, and reached back out to him, and, and woke that project back up. So, if you see Jeremy, give him a good pat on the back, because he did some great work, so.
And for those citizens that keep asking what's going on with the Dunkin', there it is. There's your news. We have a building permit.
Yeah, and also, too, for the residents that keep asking about that building across from A&amp;G, and Tractor, Hammond Tractor, as I keep seeing it on Facebook, it's been floating around the last six, seven, almost, 10 months. Dollar General. So that's, if the residents are listening, it's Dollar General's going there, so.
That's on Sheridan Drive.
Right. I keep seeing it on Facebook, and it's just amazing, people don't.
So now, we've, we focus a lot on economic development, on our Main Street redevelopment, and Main Street's a big talk. Council's talked about also looking outside of Main Street in our economic development. And it's nice to start, we're starting to see some. So, Dunkin', that's going to be down by the VFW. It's still Main Street, but heading towards 201, Sheridan Drive. Planning Board, Matt, did they approve a couple housing developments? Is that in the works?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, they did.
So, so again, for more economic development, the Big Project Ranger on 139, up, up a Main Street water, but it's actually Fairfield Center, 139. I know that Owens Construction listed their first property for sale. That's, that's in the works and being built. Forty-two different lots in that one, that are up for sale, so. And then to hear that a couple more housing projects have been approved by the planning board, you know, that's a great sign of economic development. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah. The wheels of progress are turning.
Yes.
Perfect, Stephanie, because I wanted to ask you tonight, actually, about how the downtown, you know, development survey was, was going, and also, from there, I just wanted an update on the town farm. So, you ask, you answer those questions, but without me asking, so, thanks.
All right, Dr. T, we're turning over to you for environmental committee.
So, yeah, we met, actually, on the 17th, just a few, a couple nights ago. Had a good, robust meeting that night. We had Nathan Saunders presenting to us, just with his report, some of the research he's done. Obviously, he's affected by it personally, from the Howe Road. And so he has some great numbers, and kind of looking at this, at, you know, what the contamination looks like, the fact that, you know, Fairfield is 51% of the contamination in the state, 49% in the other 15 communities where it's spread. So we are the, kind of the epicenter. And so, our biggest focus is, going forward, we want to make sure that Fairfield continues to push the state to, that we make sure that we receive the recognition that this is the epicenter, that it has affected us and our citizens the most, and that we expect there to be some support for us. Our first step along that line will be on December, December 2nd. We are actually meeting with Senator Scott Seerway, who helped, along with Representative Shelley Rednicki, put together a bill for up to a $10 million project for our first phase of, of water.
Water expansion.
And at that point, was looking at the Howe Road, but, you know, this one, it's as, yet to be determined. But that bill was passed, but now is sitting there unfunded. So, it's kind of where a lot of times funds, or where laws or bills go to die. So we want to push that that doesn't happen. We also want to push the fact that we think there should be additional testing. You have a lot of wells that came in under the cutoff, and we haven't had any follow-up testing. So, if there were 19 parts per trillion at that point, you know, the standard's changing, but even they are 19 parts per trillion at that point, are they now 25? Would they qualify for, for some filtering? Those kind of things. So we just want to make sure that, that we're not forgotten, and that's our, our goal of this committee. Obviously, we're looking at all environmental issues, but PFAS is our primary one that's driving us. So that's our, our goal, and making sure we continue along that, along that line. You know, I think from there, our next meeting after that, will be in January, on the, I think it's the 12th, but I'll obviously give you an update on that. But biggest one's going to be coming on, on the 2nd of December. That'll be here, Scott Seerway, hopefully having other members of the legislature here as well. So, he was trying to round up some other members, so that they actually understand the situation that we're in. And I think one of the biggest things that will really help us is all the hard work that we did beforehand. So we have a pretty comprehensive report, and a pretty, a good understanding of the severity of our situation. And I think we hope to impress that upon them. Kevin, would you like to?
No, I think you covered it all, and I'm always going to continue to put a plug in. We're still, we still need two more members on that committee. So.
So we have five currently. You just heard Councillor Kitchen. We're, that's a, this is a very important committee. It's environmental, but PFAS is a, a continued concern. We've approved up to seven members. They, obviously, they're doing a lot of work, talking with a lot of people, working with funding, that, that looks like some of it's getting delayed, or, or putting a stack. So if you are willing and able, looking for two more volunteers as soon as possible. So thank you for all that great work, guys.
Also, too, I've been contacted by DEP again, Sarah Smith. I guess in December, they're going to start doing the testing again, getting everyone back onto the same schedule, because there's been a lack of, you know. back onto the same schedule because there's been a lack in a few months. And also, too, since all that scheduling was behind, new tanks are being put in because they're saying it's 10 per trillion. If your tank can't make the next standing, your first tank, the second tank.
Filter, you mean?
Yeah, filter, yep. So, mine, for the first time, is going to be changed out.
Since you had them installed?
I have them installed. Because they're saying, I'm 8 right now, but they're saying the 10th is the limit. They're saying we don't want it to happen. Get to the 10, so we're going to change them out, so.
And that's probably one of our discussion points. So, one of the first meetings after we get to this one, we'd really like to have the DEP come back and present to us again and see, get a status report from them and then we hopefully, again, do our due diligence and make sure we follow through for the council town to make sure that a semi-annual, at least semi-annual report, you know, for you all to understand where we're at.
I was just wondering, would they have someone there to explain what they're reading, the testing results?
We can ask. I mean, that's one of the things.
Because there's a concern, what we had on the Ridge Road is, is it being, okay, same testing every three months? Is it the same numbers? Are they changing?
So, that's one of our, that's one of our discussions on the committee, you know, looking at the trends. And Nathan Saunders has been doing an interesting job on his own end. That's kind of, he really loves to crunch the numbers. So, he's trying to follow those trends of the testing and see, follow it to rainfall, to follow it to the, you know, the other conditions, you know, seasonally and looking at those to see if we can follow.
Is he looking like what happened this summer, the drought? Because I think drought did a lot of.
So, some of the first numbers, yeah, would actually show that, yeah, your worst, you know, there was worry that increased rainfall was going to drive more in, your numbers were going to go up. They actually saw that, they didn't see that, but actually with the drought, numbers were maybe seeing that, the water shrinking down and maybe increasing our numbers. So, they're trying to get those. I don't think there's been enough testing and that's one of the things we've been pushing for. There hasn't been enough testing to really know the trends and know the severity.
How many properties do we have with filtration systems?
Hundred and.
Forty?
Forty, yeah.
So, again, I mean, this shows a continued support for those people that are on those filtration systems to make sure they continue to be tested and the funding is there because it's to no fault of them that they've got bad water. So, again, thank you for your work. Please keep on us. Look forward to that update on the 2nd.
Two hundred. Is it 200? It's over 200.
I think it's on filters, but they're talking about other wells where the 200.
Oh, that, in between is the 140. Yeah.
All right, Peter, Building Committee.
Okay, the Building Committee's been very active since October. I know, like, October, we went to the Skowhegan Public Safety Building. Then the next day, the 28th, we went to Newport. I'm just going to roll that all up into what we had met yesterday. So, we met yesterday at 5:00 PM right here in the council chambers. So, I'm going to roll everything up from October into this meeting. So, yeah, there's five of us, include the town manager. We visited the Skowhegan Public Safety Complex on October 27th. While we visited that center first is what not to do. That building is two years old and there was issues while going through the process. They didn't have the clerk in the works, but that was a person that's actually there doing project management, saying, okay, you're at the next level. The contractor took over, saying, you don't need this, so subtract. They took $8 million off that project. We went up there, some of the buildings fallen apart already. And I observe employees. When we talked to some of the employees, I get a woman, a good feeling they were happy with that building.
They were not, you said?
Were not.
Okay.
Because there's no way to expand. Only way to expand is tear walls up. Because what we noticed was that the I-beams, what they put into some of the buildings, going through their sleep rooms, sleep rooms had to be altered because they had cross Some of the jump edges were missing. Some of the concrete was eroding already. And they waxed, polished the floors to make it nice and shiny, the gap this much. Your concrete's supposed to have nice spaces. They put global stuff in there so people won't trip.
You're talking the expansion joints?
Yeah, yeah. So, it was two bigger sizes. Some were small, then the next minute you see a big one. You know, we take our foot over that, so. What we liked, okay, what we didn't like is the fire department garage included excess amount of unusable space overhead. We went in the hallways.
Okay.
Here's your hallways, same room as the council chambers. There's your hallways. Space, utilized space was wasted, a little oasis space. When we get to the police department, the chief, same size of this room, that's his office. They're looking down the road to expand, if they expand, tear down walls. There's sleeping areas right next to the gym. We liked, well, the evidence locker was a nice addition to the evidence room, the place of the police department. Like, outside, we noticed the sidewalks, there's no, like, there is a vehicle can crash right in the buildings or handicap is someplace else. So, then we noticed, okay, you walk in, you still have a secured area if there's complaints. There's not. They had the windows, not the wrong location, the bulletproof windows inside rather than outside, so. And the non-public access around the building, there's a fence area, which we liked that all because you're parking out, all employees parked out back rather than inside, so. And it was just a lot of decision-making wasn't happening, different people taking charge of the project and signing off on it. And it was on town property, so. There's some of it we liked, some of it we didn't like. The Newport one, the next day, the Newport building's built in 2016, so that's not like a new little building. They had a good outside presence, saying, okay, if there's a, a person comes in, it's outright, it's lockdown right away. You have to call someone to come get them. Say, you want to see this person? You can stay right there and call, there's a call right there. What I didn't like about it, a lot of members liked, didn't like about it, was in the fire station, double stacking of vehicles. If you have an emergency, you have to take one vehicle out to get another vehicle out. While we were there, there was only two EMTs or five persons on duty. We went through the tour, they had to leave. Just like we had Chief Larry with us, he gives the tour of the building. So, it's a second story building, elevator and things like that. And there were some good things about it, some not. The lounge and bunk area with lesser quality than seen in the Skowhegan, in the Skowhegan one, here's your lounge, same size as your lounge. And they had a big house, everything. It had a police and fire department can have a meeting right there, so. We had, last night, we had the police chief and two members of the police department with us last night, trying to talk to what the halves, what we need for proposal for a new complex. They're not ready yet on some of the ideas, but some of the, the crew members along with the police department staff reviewed features that could be essential to the new complex. Officially, with HVAC, they had in Newport, a space that, a museum for the old fire truck. Love that. They had a glass, just people walked by, there's your entrance right there with the old fire Design of the building is a future addition, can be largely, largely added in expansion because of necessity. These two buildings we looked at, they can't expand at all. So, we're looking for the future so to expand, so we can expand. On the 5th, when we reviewed a profit of locations of this, we, all of us agreed the good location would be down the industrial road next to, in front of the public works. It's a good access to I-95. You can go across the Exelon Drive to 201. We have asked other towns for their blueprints, which they have provided. We're going to look at each one of them, how they fits us. Like on our next meeting, they're going to come up with a plan again to what is needed for the each location, each building they like. They're saying discuss with, trying to get, I can touch the RFP. And we asked the town manager what, what was the cost on that? So, she's going to look out around to see what the cost will be. I don't know, Michelle, you want to explain what, what happened with the fire, the police department, who came to visit them another day? Or if you want to explain that to everyone or?
Oh, yes. So, staff, the police chief had reached out to Susan Collins' office to discuss what would be entailed for CDS funding for a public safety building. So, some of the staff from police and fire were able to meet with them. There is a funding program. Typically, it comes out in April. It normally has a two-week window. This is not anything that we would be ready for, for 2026, simply because of the competition is so vast, you need to have shovel-ready plans. It also comes with a 25% match for this particular program that they discussed and you have to actually have those funds in your possession. So, one of the communities that we've been looking at was Freiburg. They have, they have a big plan that they just approved a bond for and it was a combination police, fire and town office. They weren't going to be, they actually couldn't even get any of the potential CDS funds unless they purchased their, used their 25% match before you could even get federal funding. It does not cover town offices. However, that building, they got CDS funding and that includes a town office. So, I think what happens is, is any part of that component has to be removed, but we're still doing some more research and stuff on that. But it was really great that they were able to reach out and start that discussion and get it on folks' radar, even if it's not next year, we start talking about it now. So, the gentleman that was here from Susan Collins' office as a rep did tour both facilities and they said one of the first thing he mentioned when he was coming out of the police chief's office is the giant crack above the door. So, he was fully aware of the fact that we definitely needed some new facilities. So, not that it's laughable, but it was, it became very evident. So, it was good that he was able to do that tour, so it was good.
Okay, our next meeting is December 16th, 5:00 PM right in council chambers and the public is invited. Any questions or any, I know there's two members of the building committees in the audience. You have any other comments or to add or?
I'll just add that kind of the next steps that we're looking at doing, as Peter had mentioned, is we are going to be drafting an RFP for conceptual evaluation of what a new municipal complex could look like, hoping to find an engineering and architecture firm with experience in this type of construction and design, as well as a firm that is really good around bringing communities together, soliciting community feedback and looking at funding sources. Some firm that has CDS direct experience would be really helpful. So, our next meeting, we're going to have a draft of that RFP prepared and we'll review it at that point. And that will come to the council, obviously, in the future.
Thanks, Max. Can we send a thank you out to Skowhegan and Newport for being gracious? I mean, we talked about what we don't want in their facilities. I'd take their facilities over ours right now. So, please, please send out a gracious thank you from us for allowing us to tour. I know Michelle mentioned that it's probably not going to reach the April deadline for submitting to Collins' office. Susan Collins is the head of the Appropriations Committee currently. She's looking, that office is looking for projects specifically in her congressional district, District 2. I mean, if any means possible, we could get something in, please do it. I know we don't want to be hasty and do things half-assed, but federal funding is hard to come by, even though it's only a 75% grant, a 75% of the building that our townspeople would not have to pay for. So, it's a great project. I hope, I'm interested to see it move quick. I know government doesn't move quick, so I don't think it will happen, but if it can happen, please make it happen. I know Hannah just left, but Belgrade, I believe in today's paper, received a new fire department with the same CDS funding, 75%. I think it was a, I'm quoting offhand, $6.7 million building and they received like $4.8 million from federal funds to build it. So, projects are going on around us, Freiburg, Belgrade.
Grant, I know Randolph's just building a new fire department down there, too, and.
Minot was another, you know, so. We know we need buildings. Let's try to take advantage of grants if we can, so. Thank you. Continue that great work.
I'll have one question. Those are both combined facilities, correct?
Okay, Newport, there was police and fire, but the town office was in the same lot away.
Yep.
And Skowhegan's is just police and fire only.
Yep. And we are, I think you've talked about it, but I'm not sure if it's on the schedule, of looking at a campus design, I don't know if you, I mean, even just next door in Oakland.
Yeah.
It'd be, I think we, it'd be wise. I'm sure you are thinking about that. So, I want to make sure that I just ask that question.
Because good size is right in industrial, industrial world, right in that lot right there.
Right.
And how's all that?
Right, so I think it should be behoove us to look at options rather than.
They did that. They had that discussion in the, in the very beginning and what they had determined through doing their tours of our buildings and discussions and looking at preliminary needs, found there to be a certain amount of cost savings if it was all combined. Last night's discussion was even such that if it was designed so that, what if it was built in phases but still connected? And the reason for that was because of a one boiler room, one server room. It was just the efficiency of having a combined facility and not necessarily separate buildings that would each require their own.
Just like Skowhegan didn't have their accommodations or a room at it, so.
Yeah, and I think those are valid concerns and valid reasons, but I think that's also, should definitely have the campus idea, because that does allow you some, maybe some flexibility for expansion down the road, too.
So, it sounds like you've pretty much got a location decided as a committee and it's got, I'm assuming, water, gas, sewer, everything. So, great progress. Thank you. Ice Arena Steering Committee, we had our first organizational meeting. We are going to meet again, tentatively, I believe, December 4, Thursday. We're waiting on Sheridan because Sheridan had done some preliminary design plans for the past group, so until we get notice from when they can be available, it's going to be a tentative meeting. So, for now, tentatively, December 4, right here at council chambers, is 6 o'clock. Michelle will update us once Sheridan can be there. We need to take what's already been. We need to take what's already been offered and given to us first. Great group of individuals, very excited group of individuals, and it was a good, basically a meet and greet, and we hope to present you a plan within six months. I would say April, come back with a couple different options. So I look forward to that second meeting. Dr. T wasn't able to make that one, but it's a pretty diverse group, so we've got a work cut out for us, but I think we have enough excitement built up. It'll, it'll rely on what can we raise for funding, so that's, that's the key element. Okay, I think that's it for committee reports. Fifth Order of Business, Consent Agenda. These items are considered routine or standard business and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a council member requests prior to consideration of this portion of the agenda, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered next on the agenda. Item 25-120, order the Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the reading of and accepts the minutes for meeting 2025-15, held on October 22, 2025. Item 25-121, order the Fairfield Town Council hereby approves the Treasurers' Warrant Number 85 in the amount of $624,329.28 to include, but not limited to, motor vehicle fees, MSAD 49, November allocation, main municipal employees' health, and New England Salt Company.
So.
Second.
Motion by Council Lawrence, second by Council Thibodeau. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, 5-0. Sixth Order of Business, Hold Council Business. Committee meeting recordings.
Yeah, so I actually did a, at least a proof of concept at our environmental committee meeting using an iPad that I had purchased, and so actually, it was okay. I'm going to send that along to, that file to Michelle, because it's a part of the record. I will need to work on the microphone system, and I think I can do that through a Bluetooth and have it centrally located, but it was actually pretty decent quality, and I think we can at least, it won't be live, but at least be a recording, and then people can go back and see. Proof of concept, it looks pretty good, pretty easy.
That's great. Thank you. Now, just so everybody knows, those files, once they're recorded, need to be archived, and that's been pretty much the delay at this point of what we're working on. So because it's a public meeting document, we have to archive them in the system. It's got to be something that Brittany and Michelle can stash and store for years and years. Thank you for that work, and I look forward to it. Seventh Order of Business, to take action on the following items of business. Item 25-122, order the town council hereby confirms the town manager's appointment of Raphael Gazza as a reserve officer for the Fairfield Police Department.
So.
Second.
Motion by Council Lawrence, second by Council Townsend. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? 5-0 unanimous? Item 25-123, order the town council hereby considers applications for Kennebec Water District trustee to fill a vacancy with the term expiring December 31, 2026. I believe we have one.
Second.
A motion by Council Thibodeau, second by Council Lawrence. We do have an application, was received on the 12th. Nathan Saunders.
Just working with him on the environmental committee. I think he, he has experience in the field. He's very thoughtful, very detailed, and I think I would highly support.
Very knowledgeable person. I was reading his description here. It just says, P.S., he won't be need, we use him, relieve himself from any decisions of Hudamaki, not district-wide, so. He was on the, previous on the PFAS committee. He and representative with Nikki did do the drinking bill. He has a PFAS lawsuit out there.
Yep. He's checked with his legal counsel for our environmental committee, and has been given the approval to be part of the environmental committee. And I would say the same would go in this case. So Hudamaki has an ongoing lawsuit against, but that would allow him to vote in any other.
And I get my last bullet here, possible personal agenda.
Water district, not so much.
He's trying to get water.
Sanitary district, maybe so, but water district, I would, I would disagree, but.
Since with the water bill, he's trying to get personal agenda with water on, up his road. He's been saying all these years that that has been affecting. I think this is a personal agenda.
Yep, and you're welcome to your opinion, and I think that's valid, that's your, your opinion is. But they also, the fact is, if we ever get to that point of a public water and that phase, it is while he proposed how there is no specific, there's no specific guideline that it has to be spent ongoing to how.
I'm just worried about the persuasion of the, of what, the Kimmick Water District.
Sure.
As a trustee.
And if you feel that way, it's valid.
It might be important to keep in mind that a Water District trustee, so Fairfield has two, but you remember that it also includes Winslow and Waterville and, you know, so other municipalities as well. So we're not the only trustees that are there. The piece that was a part of his application, too, that becomes a large asset, is that he is a licensed professional engineer, but he has worked for the main state drinking water program for nearly 20 years before he retired. So I think that that would be.
I understand about the Water District, about that, because I had a relative working for the same thing. So I just wanted to bring it out, my personal perspective on that, on this item, so.
Well, he's certainly qualified, and he knows, knows our needs. When we're talking about the Water District, let's also remember that all city water is still currently above federal standards for PFAs. So he has had knowledge, he is experiencing that same thing as a well, not only city drinking water, but I think he's highly qualified and will represent our town well. So I'd like to have a motion. We have a motion.
We have a motion in a second. You just need an amendment to add it so that the appointment is for Nathan.
So can we amend it to add Nathan?
Yes, you can. Peter, do you agree to that as a second?
You seconded it, so, yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Eighth Order of Business, Council Workshop and Other Business, discuss the KVEMS Technical Assistance Team report. It all have the in-depth report.
Michelle, quick, the Perry Ice Arena, that was in my packet.
That was the updated one that he wanted, you all wanted.
Yep. Yep. So I want to make sure if he had to follow up with that.
It was in your mailboxes, so it all ended up.
Perfect.
Michelle, can you give us a quick update on this?
Sure can. So, and I'm going to make it rather brief for you, because we do have some folks here that, that can discuss this with you. So the Kennebec Valley Emergency Medical Services Technical Assistant Team, which is KVEMS, T-A-T, Mstat, we all love acronyms, is a group of experienced EMS and municipal government administrators. They work as a team to provide technical assistance upon request for issues related to emergency medical services. So Chief Leary works with this group, and we have Dr. Pei, who is actually our medical director here for us, and Jay Bradshaw, two of the authors of this collective group, two members of the collective group of the author of this report are here tonight to discuss this with you. So what you received is their report regarding some questions that Chief Leary can further detail for you, and then some, you also got in your packet, some questions that we had had for them when we first originally received the report, and the responses back to that. So this has been a back and forth for quite some time. It's been great. We've worked well together, and we wanted to definitely make sure that before this became a put-out-to-the-public document, and they used the information that was in here, that the town council at least had an opportunity to review it and discuss it and all of that. So we received it the end of September, October being what it was tonight. It is before you. Take it away, Travis.
So I'll just give you where we came about this. I had presented a list of questions that you see in the report. Back when we started the discussion of poss, discussion of possibly starting a transporting service, you know, I said right from the get-go, I want it done in a thorough, efficient manner to ensure that we provide the best service. So these questions were developed from that, from those processes, on, you know, what are the effects of us starting a service? You know, how much potential revenue could we do? What is it going to entail? So on, so forth. So this was a list of questions that I brought to the group as, that I am a member of. This committee was formed to review these specific questions with Dr. Pei, Mr. Bradshaw, Deputy Chief Flannery, and was there one more?
Steve Leach.
And Steve Leach from Deputy Chief in Augusta Fire, reviewed those questions and came up with this report. So that's where, where the report came from, so I think they can speak to the report and what they, what they came, came to, unless you have any other questions for me.
Very good report anyways, very in-depth, and just saying what we need to improve on.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah. Did they have an opportunity to look at the audit?
Yeah, we discussed the audit. I don't know if I provided a copy to you.
You did.
Yes, they did.
The third filing audit that we had.
You have to come to the podium.
Yeah, come on up. I'll let you.
It's so that the folks at home can hear you. They can't hear you if you're sitting back there and talking, so.
Up here, all of us.
You can both come up if you'd like. It doesn't matter. If you stand up here, you don't have to worry about moving it or leaning it in to chat. Our wizr vahs in the back room will take care of everything.
I don't remember the specific audit. I do remember that we, we looked at the other assessment that you had done.
Yes, that's the audit.
Oh, it is? Okay. We're using the same. Yes.
You did. Thank you.
I don't know if one of you just wants to give a kind of rundown overview of the report. Is that what you guys would like?
Yeah, we're here to be useful to you, right? So there was a lot of effort with Michelle's help and Chief's help to make it as accessible as possible. A lot of language changing. As you can imagine, there's a lot of technical acronyms and vocabulary within the complexities of the EMS system. So with their guidance, we tried to make this as accessible as possible. The goal of it was to be as, just like Chief said, thorough, but also, we had a lot of diverging opinions in this group. If you looked at all their profiles, there's a lot of expertise amongst this group, including the chief, as much experience and expertise you would get from an outside consultation, right? Jay and I have traveled the country doing these at request for different communities, and in addition to that, what no outside report would ever give you was local expertise. And that was what I think makes this the most tangible for you, is that these are the folks that are going to be backing Chief up, no matter what the decision is. We all work together on scene. We are very familiar with each other, years of going back and forth and just doing the medicine, doing the fire scene, not as much for me, more medicine for me. So I really was excited about this idea. It also, I, I serve as your regional medical director, so as I speak, I am your dedicated agency-level medical director. So very invested in the medicine for your community, being as high-quality as it can be. I'm also equally responsible for the broader region. So part of my responsibility is balancing hats. I'm also a resident of Rome, so any decisions you make, it all has ripple effects. So I just think it's very important to try to make regional impacts come through in a way you can digest and balance in your complex decision-making. So I hope we struck that. That was our goal. I think this works best with questions and answers, though. It's, you can, you can read everything in there. It's where you need to have more depth or more clarity is most useful for your time. So please have at it with us. We're also welcome to come back.
I do have some questions. On page 11 of 26, we're talking about, I'm going to read the paragraph. Do you have it with you?
I do.
You do? Okay. So Fairfield-Benton Emergency Services did not have a paramedic available, and area EMS agencies were not able to provide a paramedic, or that paramedic arrived in a delayed fashion. Then the residents of Fairfield and Benton would experience a decline in the EMS service provided with this change. More simply stated, patients will not be giving, will not be receiving a paramedic care when needed. How often would this really happen if we're involved in mutual aid?
Right. Great question. So we tried to predict that. The first prediction you'll see is dual calls, right? So.
And there's a chart.
Yeah, there's a chart that tries to give you data, but also a summary of that. So 13% of the time, we predict, you're going to have overlapping demands on your agency.
And that's for any agency?
No, that's specific to Fairfield-Benton. So this is all very specific to your.
But all agencies do have an overlapping.
It depends on how they're staffed.
Okay.
So it's a great question, right? So this is the difference between, and I'll try to be frank, going it alone versus relying on a regional system. So Delta Ambulance is a regionalized system, far more flexible, far more deep staffing for overlapping calls. When you do it on your own, Winslow Fire is a great example, single truck, doing it on their own, they rely on mutual aid much more, because they don't have the depth that Delta had before they. And I'm their medical director, just for full disclosure, right? So I experienced with Winslow, making that transition. I'm also Waterville Fire's medical director, so I experienced with Waterville Fire doing that transition. So I've learned a lot, both local and, and that's really what drives this, is to make sure you have that. So your question is, how often will it happen?
And 13% over a five-year period?
13% per year.
Average.
Is just overlap, okay? The other part to this, the question I would ask is, well, how often do you need a paramedic? Why can't you just take care of these 911 calls with a paramedic, right? And that, we estimate, is 25% of your 911 calls a year will need a paramedic. The other 75% can be handled with an advanced EMT or an EMT, okay? So it's the 25% that matters. But you have to be careful with these numbers, because in emergency medicine, that 25% is the closest cause to life and death, right? So using numbers is one thing, but you have to be very careful that the acuity that we're talking about is that it's the paramedic scope of practice, which is having the best impact on that patient, living or dying, right? So whenever we get these numbers down to, how often does it happen? You have to add to that the acuity and the importance of when it happens, right? So it's not as easy as saying, well, one in four, we're going to roll our dice, right? That one out of those four is the most important for that patient, because they're that closest to higher acuity.
And that's being based on, number one, the amount of paramedics that we have that can go on the calls?
It, kind of. It's, it's a great question. It's based on just the 911 calls. That's the demand annually of all the calls, how they break out on acuity, complexity, and then what your decision is. That, that's the way it is right now, 25% of your calls, and it's historically been that way. What you're deciding upon is how do you adequately meet that demand? What design do you pick? What system do you pay for, right? That's where the decision is really complicated for you. And that's what we're trying to give you, as much of a well-informed decision as possible to make that, because you have to take care of your citizens. Folks have fixed incomes, they don't have an ability to pay more taxes. You're trying to get the best possible care you can for the least cost, correct? I mean, that's.
Well, that would be the ideal situation.
Yes.
Right. I mean, that's the responsibility of designing a medical system. That's what we have in the hospital. But you have to be very, very clear on the responsibility of that, right? And not be, make sure you have as much information as you can, because it may be more expensive, but it may be the appropriate. but it may be the appropriate way to spend the funds. It just depends on what you decide as a group.
With all this, in this report, how far you think Fairfield's out to make it all these requirements? How far?
Which specific requirements?
Another ambulance and another six personnel, 6-8 personnel.
And ask that question in a way, how far?
Is this feasible, reaching this goal? Is it feasible?
Oh, I, that's a very summary question, right? And.
That's part of what they need, I mean, what we do is say, this is what you need. If you're going to do this based upon your call volume, this is what it would take to staff it, in terms of the number of ambulances, based upon the number of calls, the number of people, 8.4 FTEs per ambulance, you know, that's a numbers thing. How it applies, I mean, it's up to you folks to make the decision on, are you going to staff it at that level?
As your medical director, I would say I'm worried about you making that, just to be frank.
That's what.
And I'm most worried about you solving the paramedic problem.
And why are you worried about that? Is it because there's a lack of paramedics?
There is a dramatic lack of paramedics.
We already staff them.
And what happens is, if you were, if I was, just had my regional medical director hat on, I would design a system where you shared the paramedics across the region. You only need them 25% of the time. I don't want that paramedic tied up on a knee pain call, a lift assist call. And I want that paramedic not siloed into an individual town like Winslow, like Augusta, like Waterville. You're not utilizing that paramedic resource to the whole community in any way that's efficient. And if I were to dial the clock back 10 years, I would make this argument more forcefully when Waterville considered this, then Winslow considered this, because 10 years ago, your regional ambulance service, Delta, had 20,000 calls a year, that they were able to spread all those resources out. When you look at it financially, if I put your hat on, there's a cost of readiness. That means fuel, payroll, ambulance, tires, housing. That's cost of readiness. And then there's what you get reimbursed from insurance companies. That's your income. That gap, it's never filled in EMS. It's always a gap. You have to subsidize it because insurance never pays the cost. When you go to 20,000 visits a year, it's $200-$300 gap. As you drop and get less and less numbers, the gap broadens, right? And now, if you're at 300 calls a year, it's $1,500, $2,000.
I saw that in the report.
Right?
It's saying, yeah, reimbursable for calls.
Right.
But not for the equipment.
Right.
Materials we use.
Right, right, right. There are many conflicts.
We're looking at EMS. What this report shows is EMS.
Yes.
Okay, this is ambulance. We're a fire department and EMS service. We already service these calls. Delta comes and picks up our people. We already paid for all of this stuff that you're talking about. We don't get reimbursed for any of it. We already incur these costs. I want our citizens to understand, we already incur these costs without being able to bill for transport. We may get some things back, oxygen, whatever may be. It's very minimal, okay? So, when we talk EMS and the 13% dual calls, it's very minimal. The thing that we cannot control is the per capita fee that Delta charges us. Regardless what that amount is, it's gone. And next year, it will be $600,000 between the combined two towns, minimal. And the more people that pull out of this collaborative unit, like Waterville and Winslow have done, and China's going to do, the more it's going to drive our per capita costs to keep Delta in business, to provide a service that our citizens want and need. So, if we look at going on our own EMS, when I said we already have paramedics, we have a paramedic on every shift. We don't need to get to 16. We need to get to 12. We have three shifts. And it will help us get to our audit requirement of four per staff, which helps us on a fire level when we show up for a fire, for a two-in-and-two-out call. We're able to go in and respond. We already have EMT, advanced EMT placement. That's how we hire our fire. We would stress an importance on paramedics. We would want more, the more paramedics we can get, the better. But we currently have, Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, we have one per shift now.
We do have three, yes.
Okay, so, we're already meeting what we need. It's those dual calls and the mutual aid with Waterville, Winslow, Clinton, Delta. That needs to be our focus. How do we cover those dual calls? Because we already staff a paramedic per shift. So, that 13% overlap, that's where we really need to focus on. How do those mutual agreements come in? Now, when Delta came in here and reported that if you need us, you go on your own and you need us, we're charging you $900 per call. Or the last time we met and they said, well, we're not going to send a paramedic because you already have one. And if we have to use yours, we'll pay you $300 per call, even though they're going to charge us $900 if we need theirs. So, for me personally, these are great reports, but they show how the regional service has failed us only because the two biggest driving members, Waterville and Winslow, have already left. And that reimbursement, while it may not be a huge amount of money, it will cover the staff that we need to get to a full-staffed fire department level per our audit. So, I really, I like these figures, but they distort because we're talking about ambulance service and paramedic service. We also have to look at fire protection, and that's where the bulk of our calls are. And like you said, only 25% of the calls require a paramedic service. So, for our tax dollars and for us to be where we need to be, and we can hire two people to get to 12 per shift, a 12 full staff plus chief, and still have a paramedic on every shift that we have, have mutual agreements in place with Winslow, Waterville, Clinton, Delta, and more be able to bill for that transport service, where we have an ambulance or two ambulances. It will save our town money, period.
Can I, with your respect as your medical director?
Please.
Can I give caveat to those opinions?
Absolutely.
You have one paramedic on every shift, correct?
Yes.
So, at Augusta Fire, if they have a vacation or an injury, they force in, right? Meaning they backfill with added paramedic staff. You don't have any depth if you have one back injury, one sprained ankle, one vacation. You have three paramedics. There's no depth or backup to that. To get another medic, let's say you decide to invest in a fourth paramedic or two paramedics in every shift. So, I graduated at Candyback Valley Community College, 16 paramedics every year. Every single one of those, in memory, already have a job. There's no new medics to get. If you were to expand it, they come from somewhere, right? Meaning, you will then be pulling from Waterville, pulling from Delta. Your mutual aid now is weaker because you've siloed them here for your town's needs. But you assume, and I mean this with due respect, but I feel like I get my time with you and I have a lot of experience with this, so I have to push a little bit harder. So, please give me room for this and forgive me, because I heard we can be, we can push back a little bit here, is what I heard from the beginning. There is no paramedic depth to pull from. It's my biggest heartburn is, the regional medical director, the paramedic problem is the critical problem. You are pulling there, thinking that you will solve your own problem, but you're going to weaken and you're making an assumption that your mutual aid is there, that Delta will back you up, or Waterville will, or Winslow will. They honestly are barely covering their own paramedic needs. So, don't assume that that mutual aid is there, right? So, just be careful when you make these decisions.
I don't assume it's there. We already have discussed that we need to make the investment. So, like you just said, you're only graduating 16 people, or whatever it may be. The pool isn't there. But like we do with police, and we send them to the academy and we pay for that. It could be part of our contract. We need to work with our schools, with our local community colleges, to make them aware of the need for the future. You know, this is where our focus, for me as a counselor, our focus is to make knowledgeable where the job opportunities are for the local people and what the needs of the community are. You know, if we don't get out there and say, we need paramedics, I'm not looking to poach Waterville or Winslow or Delta. I would gladly propose that we invest in our own people. If I have an advanced EMT and they want to take a paramedic license course, then maybe we put that into the contract, that we'll pay for your schooling, long as you stay here for a certain level. And I think that needs to be the focus as a regional aspect, that rather than drive the cost and the demand of a paramedic up, and the cost of the communities involved because there simply aren't enough paramedics out there, why don't we educate the people of what we need, invest in those people, and get them licensed? So, we have enough paramedics to service the regional needs of all the communities. But until that happens, mutual aid is what we currently rely on. If Delta doesn't staff enough EMTs, or paramedics, and they don't send a paramedic, we're at their mercy. They're billing us regardless of what they send. You know, if we have to rely on Winslow or Clinton, which are our neighbors, fortunately for us, Winslow has a fire chief that used to work for us, Travis used to be the fire chief at Clinton as well. So, we have, as our town goes, we have a little better pull in an idea of where we need to be in the future. But I totally understand what you're saying. We're also conscious of our neighbors like Rome. I got a son that lives in Rome, Sydney, Oakland. They know if we pull in this direction, what's it going to do to them? So, unlike Waterville and Winslow, who didn't really care, it's all about that dollar amount, we also have to look at for our community, where these numbers show that Delta's at 25 or 35 per capita, and we already know they're going to 55 or 60, that money's gone. That's $600,000 that we pay Delta, that we're not able to reimburse for. We can invest in our own people and provide the same service we already provide and recoup some of that cost that we already provide.
With respect, can I flesh it out even further, just see if it has traction with you?
Please.
I mean, and I appreciate that shout-out to get more investment in the paramedic education because I need that shout-out. So, anywhere we can share that and get more investment in the community college and take it out, it's not as easy as that. If you take a new grad, if I grad, if you hired one of my KVCC paramedics right now, because I'm their medical director too, and you graduate them and you put them in Fairfield, okay? That's a brand-new paramedic. So, what we've struggled with Chief and I is, how do you onboard a new grad paramedic, isolated, solo operating with no depth? There's no senior paramedic to train them after they're hired. So, the way medicine works, you know, I graduated med school, that's great. I had three years of supervised residency training after that. So, if you land at Delta, you have an onboarding system with a depth of field operating seasoned doc, I'm sorry, paramedics, that train you from new grad into ability to operate on your own. You have an intensive system to do that. So does Augusta Fire, right? So, here, as your medical director, when you tasked me with making sure that the care is appropriate, how am I going to onboard that new paramedic here? How do I get them from being a fresh new into an experience able to operate at your expectations when you call? That's a lot of stress on me. I don't know how to onboard them without the depth of seasoned medics. So, when you go off on your own, it's not as simple as call 911 and an ambulance arrives or buying an ambulance. There's much more complexity to this that worries me, to be totally frank, as you can tell, right? And I'm responsible. They take care of their patients. I really feel through them is how I care for your patients as your medical director. So, I want you to be eyes wide open on this, that it's much more complicated, much more risky. Possible, if you want to push back and say, can it be done? We did pull it off at Winslow. I didn't think they could. We did pull it off, but it's tenuous and they have nine per diem paramedics that they pull from. Where are you going to get your nine that add on to your one? You know, so, there's lots of different ways to do it. We can talk about that, but I think we've got to be eyes wide open straight through. So, go ahead.
You mentioned in the report that Delta does do some onboard training.
Yes.
Is that just for Delta's paramedics, or is that for the region?
So, no, we would lean on Delta. We would lean on Augusta. And they have been welcoming to say, we can help you with that onboarding, right? For sure. You do have to pay for that, though. That's time away from your shifts. That's time and a half overtime, depending on your contracts, for enough of a time that they come out of it seasoned, right? Ready to go off on their own. And that time is dependent on their skills coming out of that. I would assess that with Chief and say they're ready or they're not, right? In each one, some are ready or quicker than others are, just like us as docs, right? So, again, it's possible, but it is a significant.
So, if they're newly licensed, they're not ready? I mean, I know like a doctor.
Absolutely.
You've got a residency.
Yeah.
If I'm going to pay for a paramedic.
Yeah.
They got a paramedic license, but they're not really ready to go be a paramedic. What am I paying for?
Well, I don't think, I think you do need onboarding.
How do I know Delta doesn't send me a brand-new paramedic?
Yeah.
How do I know what their onboarding is? How do I know what the experience?
Exactly. That's the conversation exactly that we have. That's what you rely, I hope, on me to help you with, right?
They have a clinical they need to go through, like so many hours.
I understand how the medical field works.
I know.
Yeah.
My daughter, my daughter.
No, it's a fair, it's a fair pushback, right? Like, it's a fair pushback. I think, and it's a fair question that illustrates your understanding of that.
Not to be rude, disrespectful.
Please.
When I go to my doctor.
Yeah.
And his diploma, Dr. Townsend, okay?
Yeah.
I go to my doctor, his diploma says Harvard Medical School.
Yeah.
I don't know if he finished first in his class.
Yeah.
I don't know if he finished 5,000th.
Right.
I don't know if he's got two years' experience or two days' experience.
Yeah.
All I know is the diploma says Harvard Medical School, and I trust that. So, when a paramedic is licensed.
Yeah.
And my union contract says, this is what I pay for a licensed paramedic, that's what I pay. I expect them to be ready and able to do the job. When I'm dying and I need a paramedic that shows up at my house, I'm not asking them, boy, is this your first call? I expect, so, in all due respect.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. We would have to rely on our personnel as far as the per diem and things like that. Those are discussions that we would, we would want your expertise.
Fair.
Ask, you know, obviously, we need more than three. How do you do it? Well, you do it with a call roster, right?
Right.
You do it with mutual aid agreements with the other towns. But we have already discussed that we would want to invest. There is a need, rather than drive up the cost for an inexperienced paramedic that just got their license, that can go anywhere they want to because the demand is there, why aren't we focusing on, these paramedics make a good living. We pay very good wages and very good health benefits, and there is a massive need and our community wants you. Why aren't we focused on working together collaboratively, not still being separate units, but collaboratively instead of poaching each other, which just happens all the time? Delta gets poached by Waterville-Winslow, Waterville-Winslow get poached by Delta or Skowhegan, wherever it may be, because the demand is there. So, until we educate our local schools, our community colleges, which I believe community college is still free, that we need paramedics, and it's a great lifelong career, and it pays very well, and it's a service that our people need, why aren't we approaching that as a regional approach?
Oh, I love that regional approach. That's spreading, that's where we started. That's spreading your paramedics out, sharing them amongst. That is a brilliant, like, that would be the ideal way to solve the paramedic problem, is have a regional approach to it, right? And that is done in other parts of the country.
Sometimes it's even called a district.
It is called a district sometimes, exactly right.
You're talking about an emergency management district.
Yeah, agreed.
And again, that's the basis of a mutual aid agreement in the whole area.
Yes.
But I feel it's, we're not at that point in this region at all. The seeds have yet to be planted.
Yeah.
They need to be watered.
So, everybody has their.
This is the conversation, is how you get there, though, is exactly this back and forth, right? And you're responsible with the tax, the use of the tax with folks that have nothing more to give in that front, and you need to get the best possible care, right? But you're also responsible for all these other parts of running a town, right? So this is just one piece of everything else you're responsible for. So leaning and having this back and forth and having the courage to be able to disagree and hammer it out, perfect. Like, I feel much better having this more depth back and forth here because I feel like we're, we can have different opinions on this, and I feel you do have a good understanding of it.
You're a medical director. We rely on you.
Fair.
I'm having this conversation, but I also want to make sure I reiterate, our paramedics are not just paramedics, they're firemen. And we rely on them to wear two hats, just like our councils have to wear two hats.
Yes.
So as a council, when we look at that, that's important. How do we fill out our roster so that it covers both parameters? And when we deal with a company like Delta, who now has linchpin' us with a service that we need and ties a fee to it that we have no control over, that's when we have to get involved and say, how do we fix this? So, you know, if we can work with you and we work on the education piece and we work on the districting piece, but for Fairfield, for myself in this position, I have to worry about what's best for Fairfield. And currently, our people want, they want to make sure they're taken care of.
Yeah.
They want to make sure when their house is on fire, somebody's able to enter it when they show up. They want to make sure that they've been triaged, they're not waiting X amount of minutes for another service to show up to transport them because we're already there. So I appreciate, this report is fantastic. I can tell that the in-depth work, but it's half of what we do or even a very small percentage of what our overall EMS service does because we're a fire department as well.
I do have...
Yep. Go ahead, St.
So Kevin, you want to go? I've already said...
Yeah. A lot of the, a lot of the things I had highlighted, had questions to elaborate on, you've kind of already answered. But first, I want to say I appreciate the report. I read it as a completely unbiased report with facts, and I appreciated that.
Good.
But going through, I'm going to skip over because with the conversation, I've crossed off a lot of the things. In the summary on page seven, you talk about the revenue, 620,000, I know, Delta billed for 800 something thousand, rough estimate, and they received 600,000. Is that, does that account for the 5% to 10% that they're paying for a billing company?
They do their own.
They do their own in-house billing.
So in this case, we would, we would be on the hook for the other 5% to 10% for a billing company.
Good catch. Exactly right. Exactly right.
Answered my questions on the mutual aid. You mentioned quality assurance in the report a couple of times. Can you explain what quality assurance program is in this, in a nutshell?
You know, nothing can make me happier than getting asked that question, right?
Love to tell you about it.
Yeah. So your expectation of having excellent care when you call 911, right? Well, it doesn't just happen. And when you graduate as a paramedic, it's the same as us in the hospital. Once I get out, I am well-trained. I am, I did pass my tests. I do know what I'm doing, right? Whether I was bottom of the class or top of the class, I love that. But you, it doesn't just maintain, it doesn't just stay that way, it doesn't just happen. You need oversight. I have oversight as a physician. I have a chief medical officer, I have a medical director overseeing my care day in, day out, hour after hour. If you don't have quality assurance, meaning an investment in oversight and accountability, then you have no right to expect that the care is going to maintain as excellent, right? So full disclosure, there are many different versions of good quality assurance. One of them happens to be Delta ambulances. They have two full-time paramedic quality assurance officers that review 100% of their 911 calls, 100%. Lifeflight of Maine, same idea, multiple quality assurance, they review 100% of their calls. MD3, I review 100% of our calls because I don't take anything for granted, right? So if you don't do that, or if you don't invest in that, and it's hourly wages, it's officer positions with authority in your department, right, that have a scope of practice that's worthy of reviewing all the calls, all of that has to happen. You can't put that on just a single chief, it's not fair. The chief has to run the department. Augusta Fire, Waterville Fire, fire departments, fire rescue have deputy chiefs of us that are EMS dedicated so that they can maintain this. Those are bigger departments. I'm not saying you need that here, it's not always right size, but you have to have quality assurance if your expectation is to have the best possible care every time.
Your answer is what I expected. Just real quick, having been in the military, we always sent our best people to our quality assurance.
Exactly.
So what I took from this is we need to consider going down this road, hiring, making sure that we have a full quality assurance department.
You also need to have that report to you, right? So if I were to redesign my other departments, I wouldn't just bring the report to the chief, meaning the monthly quality assurance report. If I could redesign this, lessons learned over 30 years, bring it to the town council.
Right.
You're the ultimate one-ups of your department. You should have a monthly quality assurance report on your desk every month that summarizes 100% review of the calls before, that we explain to you, that we translate, we tell you what's gone well, what didn't go well, what our plan is in response to it. If you're doing this on your own, that's what Delta ambulance does on its own care, right?
Is there a, is there a regional auditing of the quality assurance programs?
I wish. If you could give me that as regional medical director, I would, I love your questions, please. I would love that. But no, we do not resource our regional office to have a quality assurance.
Why doesn't Delta give us a report every month? We pay them enough money.
They, they do have a report that they, which I, I would ask to see the report. Absolutely.
We have been getting some more regularly, but it's not, we got, want a couple...
I, in fact, I highly encourage you to ask for that and poke at it because it is a wonderful model of how to, it's not the only model. It's not, I would ask for lifeflights. They also, right, they respond for you. See how they do their quality assurance. Because if you're looking for best practice goals, those are your two, right?
Right.
Bath Fire Department has a great quality assurance program. It's not, it's not just Delta, just, you can find this in many places that are examples of best practice.
We currently have a program, don't we, in-house?
We do do QA and QI, yes, with Dr. Page's assistance.
So, and that's part of all of the stuff that Travis had been, that the chief had been working on in the comments about how, again, it can't be done unless it can be done right.
Yeah, right.
And so it was, it's, these were all things that we have talked about and we've gone back and forth.
And like we've said before, it does need to be improved, especially in the transporting one.
Once you hit transporting, it has to be very different than what we do right now.
So, you know, that is one of your recommendations is to have an enhanced QA, I, education tracking system. And we were, in the audit, we were also encouraged to come up with our standard operating guidelines and make sure that's down.
Which we have those.
And that has been taken care of, correct? So in looking at your recommendations, the big thing, of course, is the dollar signs, the cost and the benefits. And I talked with Michelle earlier today about the, because you had recommended 100,000 per year for emergency capital equipment and replacement. And for 2026, we are budgeting 100,000.
Good for you.
But we also need to do, if we had a transport service, we would have to increase our supply line. And of course, we'd have more staffing of two and a half more people, which doesn't account for those that go on vacation or are sick.
Right.
And so we're looking at an easy 500K there. And like Tim was saying, you know, the big thing is you are juggling money all the time. And what, what do you do? We're, you know, we're getting our, a brand-new ambulance, we're so blessed to be getting this.
Yeah, congratulations, yeah.
But if we were to do a transport service, we would need another one. And your recommendations in the report, I feel are very valid, and they do cause concern. And if we're going to go and go with transport service, all our ducks need to be lined up in a row before we do that. We can't just do anything half-assed, but we've got to make sure we are prepared. And I think people need to realize this is not a for-profit organization.
Oh, no.
Not at all. And, but we are looking at what can be the best service provided to our citizens. So, and Kevin, you did a good job asking questions because I had the QA thing too down.
I still have a couple on it.
Yeah, and I do too, so I think we're just looking at recommendations. Your turn.
All right.
We installed mine still.
We'll volley.
I'm fighting over you.
On page 10, with the chart talking about transport to inland, Maine General, in Waterville, Reddington, these five-year calls, what have, what have you seen? What could we expect as a data point as far as transfers? Because pretty much everything's going to Augusta now.
Yeah, thank you.
So now we're talking wintertime transport, we're talking timeframes.
Yeah.
Now we're out of service for X amount. That, with the redundancy that you're talking about and the mutual aid, what's your thoughts on that?
Oh, thank you for catching it because this is, this data was a year ago now, right? And a lot's happened with inland closing in that time. So I don't know what that 13%, that 13% would increase with the increased transport time. I would have to, Jay, this is your...
That's okay.
I'm not the operational expert on that one, right? You know, so I think it can be calculated and estimated, and I deeply appreciate you catching that. It just, again, it gives me deep more reassurance that we're really digging before we consider this. And it's easy for me to poke holes in this and talk clinical and talk quality assurance and talk onboarding and education because those are, I don't have to pay for any of that, right? So I can come in and really stick you in the side on those because I have very high expectations for your patient care, right? I'm not going to drop that an ounce. So I'm going to push as hard as I can for that to be resourced as much, but I don't have to pay for it. So please ask the questions that you're...
So piggybacking off from what Kevin has just talked about, can you receive licensing for mutual, for transporting? Like, if we were to help Waterville, suppose it was a catastrophic incident?
Yeah.
And they needed more transport vehicles? If we had an ambulance with the proper licensing, could we go and transport to like Augusta?
Oh, you're talking about now?
Now, right, because I'm thinking of licensing. It's too bad to have an ambulance where we can't transport, but if there's some, and I picked this up off, was it China that just did their thing?
Exactly right. Good.
Right, so they are getting like a 50-50 licensing opportunity so that they can go and transport if needed?
Yes.
We could do that as well.
Yes, so I'll start...
Yeah, I was just going to say that China, China is, it's my understanding, they're intending to stay with Delta, much like Albion does the same type of thing. Albion has an ambulance, an ambulance license. The ambulance license just allows them to transport, doesn't say you have to transport. Now, in the case of Albion, for example, there are times, many times, where Delta will go out and grab the patient because Albion doesn't have the crew. They don't have two, they might have one person available, but they don't have two. Same type of thing might happen in China as well. So you could be licensed as an ambulance service but not have to transport every single time. I also just wanted, you know, these are fantastic questions, and I want to just clarify that the task before us was to answer the questions that Travis asked us. We don't have a dog in this. I mean, other than the fact that I live in Sydney, for which I apologize on a regular basis, but, oh gee, this is recorded. But no, all kidding aside, we're very interested in what happens here in a region, but our goal is to have you be educated and here are the things that need to be considered. How do you staff? What is your onboarding? What is your QI? What can you expect from revenue? And revenue's not going to get any better. Revenue's going to get worse. I mean, that's, 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 that would take a rocket science to figure that out. What are the things? What do you do about provider wellness? There's a huge issue with, you know, the suicide and injury rate of emergency responders, police, fire, and EMS. So just, we're not saying you shouldn't do it, we're just saying, as you do, think about these type of things. Ask these great questions.
But that's also a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's something that all departments should be thinking about.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Did we answer the question about the, that you can have an ambulance?
Yes, you can have an ambulance.
You can ask for reimbursement for those transports? So you can bring income in for that, right? So there are...
But that would have to go through medical billing.
It would, and you would have to pay a percentage to them, right? Somewhere between 5% and 10%. Travis, is that...
It's clear you have to have a license to do it.
Right.
Meaning, when the ambulance is delivered to us, we do not have the ability to use that as a transport vehicle.
Right, as of right now.
I just want to make sure that's very crystal...
Yes, you would have to, it's do, it is doable, but you are not there.
Yes.
Right, agreed.
And there's a process you have to go through before you can bill.
Right.
You have to be set up with Maine Care, with CMS, you have to get a provider. There's a whole process that your billing company can help you with.
Can I also address the mutual, because you had asked me about mutual aid and can you have a contract? Yes, I think the, I think the best way to explore that is bring those partners in, bring the different chiefs in and really talk the nuts and bolts of what is their capacity? How much mutual aid do they feel they have to offer you, right? What's the cost if that's how it's going to work? And then challenge it back and forth and say, maybe there's a way we could all work together and do this at more cost-effective to everyone, right? Meaning, do I need the full ambulance or do I need the paramedic mutual aid? And what are the different ways? And I know you've had some conversations with Delta on modified ways to explore it, right? It may not be the right fit, but that, again, that type of conversation is how we get to where you're seeing this as a district.
And it wasn't, it's not just with Delta, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Travis, it was with the other regions, municipalities, that conversation is ongoing.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would think. It's, it's also, what's different now than 10 years ago is it, you're the ones talking about this now. It's not just us as EMS chiefs talking about it and then having to pitch it up to this type of meeting. This is the first time where your level is now figuring out what is the best way to provide 911 care, police, fire, EMS altogether amongst your town colleagues as well. This is where we're going to actually figure this out and become the most effective and efficient with the tax dollar, but it's just going to be years down the road.
That's because we have a private entity going to bill us $600,000 for that service. It's not that we wanted to do it, it was forced upon us. This is a service we used to give for free three years ago. They billed, that's how they made their revenue. Now it's a service that they bill us and they bill for revenue. So it's not, it's not something that we forced this, they forced it on us.
I have two more questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting.
One of your recommendations was to budget for a minimum of 60 hours a month for, for training.
I think it was...
Again, in a nutshell...
I think it was quality assurance.
Fairfield Benton should budget for a minimum of 60 hours of staff time per month for QA, education tracking billing, other responsibilities. What does that look like? Is that obviously on-shift? Is that off-shift? Is that setup, dedicated training? Is that regional training? How does that, what does that look like?
I think we would want to have, we would want to bring you examples, right? What is Winslow doing? How do they tackle that? How does Waterville Fire tackle the quality assurance and the education? How does Delta do it, right? Like, I would, I would ask them to come in and present to you so as you're budgeting it, you know what you're getting for that investment. Winslow has a really unique way where they, they rely on their town, it's an administrative assistant level that's split between law enforcement, fire, and rescue, and they're the ones that compile the report. And they're the ones that guarantee it comes every month, right? And has it prepared for us. And they're not a direct part of the fire department, they're a town asset. So that, that tends to be, that gave us a consistent accountability. It always arrives on time. Chief and I don't have to try to remember who did the report this month and, you know, our heads are all, we're just not monthly...
So it was...
There's different ways to do it.
Estimate of 15 hours a week of administrative duties to make sure we budget above and beyond. Is that how I read this?
I, I, I think it depends on what resources you have already that you could tap into to get a certain set of goals, right? But I think we would need to lay that out. I would make a very high expectation recommendation to you on, on high-end quality assurance, and then you would come with as many unique ways to get to it, right? You can tap into chief's resources of personnel. We have very smart folks on this. Ira Cohen is already your EMS director, very good at doing quality assurance. He gives chief paramedic level input on that, so I would lean on that already existing quality assurance asset. I think what you need to, where our biggest improvement would be is consistency. Are you getting it every month? Or are we doing it in a half-average sprint and rest? Sprint and rest? That's how we do EMS without help from your level is we're really good at acute emergencies and then we ease off and we, we're not as good by, this is why we ended up in this field, we're not as good at day-in, day-out consistency, but that's your expertise. That's what you take for granted is your superpower, but demanding that on us or giving us a resource to get to it is, is part of that investment. But I'm getting too granular on this. I think we got to talk about that months down the road, right? Of what my wishes would be.
The last question, I guess maybe it's not necessarily a question, but one of, I think one of the most important things to me in this whole report was mental health or as you titled, provider wellness. Is there, is there regional, how would this tie into more EMS? I mean, I don't...
Well, here again, there are departments that can guide you with that. I believe Augusta Fire has recently within the...
Do they have their own chaplain, so to speak, and that type of thing?
They have a, they have a person, I'm not sure what their qualifications are.
They have firefighter medics who are therapist-trained and specifically targeting the public safety, mental health challenges of just, it's just chronic trauma of what their task to see.
Deal with, right.
And so they have taken their whole department and done internal and involve family in order to have sort of grant, through and through training on how to build resilience against traumatic exposure, right? So that's their take on it. That's a tremendous investment that they've done on time, it's, you know, to do it. But that would be, I would go to them first and, and ask for that. What was that investment? What did it cost you? What were, they may be able to laterally provide it to chief, right?
Have you seen other departments tie in this with their police departments as well?
Great question.
I haven't personally, I've seen City of Portland also, that's a large department, but they, they have a person whose full-time position is this, as a social worker type of person. I don't think they're tied in with the police department, but I could be wrong about that.
I think usually they're separate.
Yeah.
How do you guys do, how do you guys deal with things now Travis?
So typically, we have, well, for a long time, we've had a regional through like APMS.
Critical incidents.
You know, critical incident debriefing. A council will come in after a serious incident and we'll have a meeting, discuss it. That's typically what we do. We also have referrals through Main Municipal Association to refer our employees for assistance and counseling and that sort of stuff. But typically, yes, after a critical incident, we will have a debriefing with, with a debriefing team.
So if, would this be something that, and I don't want to go too far in the weeds, but it's very important to me.
Yeah.
Is this something that quality assurance would, when you have something like that, quality assurance would alert you as the chief, hey, Sergeant so-and-so or firefighter experienced this and you may want to look? How does that work?
It may, but part, part of it also may be the culture of the service is that rather than having one person that's looking at a call, you've got a team where people are looking out for each other. And so you've got, you know, Travis and I are on a call together and he's, he's sensing that I'm behaving a little bit differently. He might step in and say, hey, let's, let's get together and let's have a, have a talk. And to try and head it off before it becomes a, a critical incident where, where people leave, there's a, there's a high turnover. One of the problems we have with paramedics is there's a high turnover. They are, they are well-paid and they've become better well-paid. The burnout is huge. The impact on families, divorces is huge and it's not just, I mean, police, fire, EMS, it's, it's emergency responses. So to the extent that there are things where the whole team can look out for each other on a, on a regular check-in basis, that's where you keep people longer, they're healthier, they're happier, they provide better care.
I just, and I know the town manager and the, and the chief, you guys are probably looking at this already, but as we bring more people into our departments, I think this is, this becomes obviously more and more of an issue because we're seeing it more and more. And I, I would like to see something, you know, the next time we do a report on what our plans would be for the mental health of that and maybe we can talk to, to police chief or what our plans are for that.
So what we can get you is what we currently have in place. So this is a topic that has become more in the open in probably the last three, probably not even five years, I don't think, but definitely within the last three years. And it is something that is addressed through, like we had said, Main Municipal Association, our health insurance, there's employee assistance programs. There's a lot of things that we do already have in place, educational pieces. The chaplain for the police department will also serve for the fire department. So we do have those things and we can get you lists of those, but it is one of those pieces that it was never talked about in, in the public view, but it is really getting, we're shining a light on that and, and bringing it more to the forefront. So it is definitely part of our plans and it's part of our existing plans and not just for public safety, but it's also for all of our employees, public works, town office, code for, like every one of our employees have the ability to use these services.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all.
I will, just to reassure you, we talk about, you know, the red ambulances, the white ambulances, the orange ones, and they seem to be these deep lines. The minute this goes down, it's, it all dissolves, right? And it's the Delta medic checking in with chief and it's chief checking in with, we all are one community on these and you, you watch these, it's just like a complex scene. Everybody just, whatever we were battling on town meetings goes away, right? And especially around this, it's true. So they check on me, I mean, it's wonderful. Like they'll call me up and say, hey, doc, that was a hard call. You doing okay? I mean, this is just, it's getting better, right? It's more open, so.
Gentlemen, I thank you for doing the report. I also thank you for your efforts and your time tonight. You've given me a lot more to think about and I know, because of the emergency cert training that's coming up, I can't, I believe, it's really important that we get people involved and dealing with the mental health issues that everybody's experiencing, it's time for us to work more collectively as a group, whether we call it a district or mutual aid, but I think we've got to open some doors.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate the hard questions and the good discussion.
We're happy to come back and continue answering your questions.
Without you, we don't get the new blood, so thank you. Encourage you to do what you do, we need it. You keep us safe, our people need it. Thank you.
And if you have more questions after you, you know, tonight's conversation, because we usually always think of something on the way home, let me know, I can get them to them.
Yeah, please.
They've been great to work with and, and have been very helpful, so.
And that's why I developed these questions in the first place, is to give you all the information that you can get because, like I said from the get-go, this is a huge endeavor. This is something we're going to go down. It's not just as simple as we have a truck and now we can throw people in the back. There's a lot of moving pieces and I want it done right. I don't want it, I don't want it to look back a year later and say, boy, this kind of sucks, you know?
And I don't either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discuss vacancies on boards and committees. Michelle, do you have an update on what we have?
Oh, I think our town clerk does.
So, I have already reached out to those people on boards or committees that are about to expire. As of right now, there is a vacancy for the Board of Appeals for voter registration. It looks like we need somebody who's unenrolled as part of their party choice. There is a vacancy on Board of Assessment and Review with two other seats for renewal. Budget Committee, Economic and Community Development will be a vacancy. There's two vacancies for Environmental Committee that Kevin had mentioned earlier. Land Use Board of Appeal still be a vacancy. There's two alternate members for Planning Board needed as well as somebody's seats expiring. So there's a handful that are open. I will have the official memo for you guys in the December meeting and I will be advertising on our website and Facebook page of the openings in the event that somebody doesn't want to, you know, reapply for their seats.
So we're, we're reaching out to those. So typically those that are currently involved with a board of committee and they wish to continue, that, that just gets brought to your attention and they get reappointed to those pieces. Or we're looking for folks who aren't willing to continue due to, for whatever reason and we have those vacancies, we have existing vacancies where folks just hadn't filled positions. It's always important that the community participates in their community and getting volunteers, we know sometimes it's difficult. So the other thing we're going to be working on is making sure, we had done it last year, we're going to make sure it's current and up to date. Just, we have little blurps on what each committee does, what the expectation is, when they meet, you know, their current schedule, that kind of stuff. We're going to make sure that gets out there, gets promoted as well. So folks can have a little bit more idea of what those committees do.
I was just going to ask about that. I mean, people have to know what they ask.
Yeah, like what is it, what's going to be my responsibility?
I believe it's also on the website under Government and then Boards and Committees. There's a fillable PDF application I just put on there. If people want to apply, there's also some in my office, some at the table in the lobby of the town office.
Some here.
There's some here, so definitely apply. There's applications everywhere and it would be nice to see some.
We can't guarantee that you'll always get to go on a fabulous tour in Newport or Scottsdale, but, you know, but it's, it's good. There are a lot of good groups out there.
Yeah, thank you. Other council business, Council Kitchin.
And sake of time, I'm just going to limit it to one that you and I had talked about before. We, and I like the report, in the town manager's report about the community center, maybe in this year's budget, we can plan for a digital keypad so we don't have a physical key and it can be changed with people checking into the building or not and get away from the key aspect. I think that would, that would go a long way with allowing people in and out of this building. And that's all I have. We can look at the cost.
It happens a lot with storage units now, so just reprogram the code every time.
The issue is, is that when you have four events on the weekend and you...
Multiple rents.
You have multiple rents and then every single day you would have, we'd have to change the code sometimes four and five times. That, that's, but we can look at other options, right? For things during that, but yeah, it...
It just seems weird giving people a key to the building.
Well, so they're, they're limited to what they have access to, but the reason why is because they get the key when they actually pay for the use of the facility as opposed to the code. And what we don't have is someone who is in this building 24/7 that can maintain and watch it. That's, that's what we have to keep in mind, but we can look at other options for that. We are, the building, we have a lot of our buildings need to be rekeyed.
Key may work fine, I just, I was just thinking about it.
No, we can look at that.
Thank you. Council Tippettow.
The Community Emergency Response Team Training is going to be taking place in January and I just want people to know that it doesn't have to be just Fairfield residents. This is opened up to the whole region. So the maximum, we need to have at least five people to do the training with a max of 20 and it's going to be two 10-hour days, second and third Saturdays in January.
There are 10 people who have registered so far.
Are you serious?
10?
Oh, wonderful.
I, I get emails a lot. I've had three just yesterday.
You're writing the paper.
Yeah, wow.
Council Tippettow had an article Sunday in the paper, I believe it was Sunday.
Yeah.
It was a fantastic article. It described everything about cert, great pictures too, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
There's, and then there's a mixture, there's Fairfield residents, Benton, Winslow, Bingham select person.
Wonderful news, Brittany.
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
Well, thank you for the time and effort.
Oh, thank you.
I know, it's a lot of time you've put into it.
And you would not believe what's in those backpacks.
I saw your picture.
Oh, well, they, they actually had a crowbar, a big wrench, goggles, flashlight, batteries, that silver blanket, you know? It's just, and it was stuffful, and a helmet. I mean...
Are you going to model for us?
We're picturing the papers with the helmet, so.
Yeah. Oh, the picture in the paper had the helmet one? I didn't see that one.
I'm picturing Council Tippettow looking like a minion with a helmet.
Oh, I didn't see that.
10th, 17th?
Well, yeah, I think it's the 10th.
But you have to get to both of them, so that's what if you...
Yes, you do. And it's 10-hour days and light refreshments will be offered, but you have to bring your, we're brown bagging lunch. You know, it's, it's something, you know, what Dr. Pei was saying and we're, we're talking it, doing mutual aid and we are, we are all in this together and it's just a whole different way of looking at how we want to do emergency preparedness.
I'm not sure if there's going to be any of those in the future, I mean, like 10th would be great, 17th not in the state, so.
Well, if you can do it online.
Okay.
It's grueling, they tell me, but...
But if you're on vacation, a 10-hour day might not, on a Saturday might not be what you want. And you have to do both days.
Yeah, that's right, that's what...
You have to do both days.
You have to do both days.
So there's online training too, or?
You can do the whole training online, but remember you don't get the hands-on. So that makes it more, and you're, part of it is emergency first aid.
Are you considered part of the 20?
Um, yes and no. If there is, I'll be there, but if we have room, I would be.
Okay.
I'm, at my age, I'm probably only good for using a radio.
Traffic direction.
Traffic? Well, I don't even know about that. I could do a radio.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a great article and I'm glad people are signing up.
Thank you, I am so... Happy.
Hard work pays off. Yes. Anything else?
No, I'm done.
All right. Council Townsend.
So I guess a little bit, I'll try to keep it fairly short, but I think one of the things that I heard where we were just discussing, I think the regional approach, and we need to kind of revisit that because I think, one of the things I was thinking about is, okay, how do we help each other, mutual aid, but what do we think about like a regional pool of per diem? So I mean, there you can draw from and so you can fill your gaps and you may not have, there's things, things to think about, regionalization. So that regional pool to pull from, also the same thing, we're talking about mental health, again, regionalization. We don't necessarily have a size of a department like Augusta does, but between Waterville, Winslow, ourselves, Oakland, whoever, we have those abilities. So I think we, I think we've all talked about this, but I think a focus on regionalization for our EMS and for other things as well is going to be really the key for us to maintain affordable, high-quality services for our citizens, so that's, that's...
That regional pool idea is fantastic.
I was just like thinking here, like we were talking about, it's not equipment, we have equipment, but we have, need the people. And so something like that would be an idea, so. But yeah, I'd like to revisit that one.
Yeah.
December 2nd, I just want to make another pitch for our Environmental Committee. We'll be meeting at 6 o'clock and I think that's going to be a good chance to talk to our legislators and so we welcome you to be here as well. Number three, I just want to put a shout out to the Fairfield Interfaith Food Pantry for the good work they do along that line. So feel free to try to, if you can scrape up a little bit to give them a donation this time of year, I think it makes a, goes a long way. And kind of piggybacking on that, I really want to thank our chairman, Tim Martin, for his great work with the Brady Martin Foundation and providing a lot of good dinners for folks and then families this Thanksgiving. So I really appreciate what you do, Tim, and I think it's a great way to remember Brady. So nice job. And then for, the last one for me is just to say, Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Council Lawrence.
Okay, this Friday, the Grange is having a senior luncheon from 11 to 2 and it's their turkey dinner. Also too, December 11th, I talked to Michelle already, there's going to be a two-hour class online, 6 to 8 of our emergency management, cooling and warming center and emergency shelter training. And that's a two-hour course, 6 to 8, right here in the, and I'd like to, wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, I know we've been long already and I'd like to say I'm going to be short, but I'm not. So first of all, my seventh annual memorial Thanksgiving drive was a great success, thanks to all the people in the community, counselors that donated to Grange, I can't thank enough. The ask this year was 130 requests, so every year at Thanksgiving, the guidance counselors of our local SAD 49 schools will give me a request for each school. They send out a letter, they know who's in need, what families are in need, they try to cross-reference, so families. And we used to do Thanksgiving baskets with full turkey and all, I don't have freezer space anymore, so we do $25 gift cards. have freezer space anymore, so we do $25 gift cards. I was worried at first, the first week I had like 25, 30, am I never going to make it? We did, we, last Friday, we were able to complete it with 130, delivered them all on Monday. Guidance counselors are so appreciative. I've even had a couple others that have reached out with actual Thanksgiving baskets and I've told them to contact the food pantry or our local police department once in a while will call me and ask me for some needs, so those people out there that are still looking to help, food pantry is open tomorrow. I know they've been hit hard this month with, with the SNAP, so please reach out to them. With it being Thanksgiving, I think it's important that I recognize not only our town employees, but our volunteers on all our community, all our committees, boards. I'm going to first start with my council members, thank you for all you do. I was informed with me signing up for the ICE Steering Committee, first time in probably forever, that every counselor has volunteered to be on at least one committee. Some of you are on multiple committees, so I commend you and I thank you. But I'd like to thank our staff, Council Tippettow, we just made a list, and there's 108 people under Michelle's direction, so we'll start with thanking the town office and Michelle Flowelling, Bethany Burns, Danielle Goodrich, Brittany Garett, Nicole Martin, Sheila Patel, Yana Quarian and Samantha Souther, the Public Works, Tom Williams, Conal Leary, Kevin Quimby, Devin Holt, Connor Grindel, Brian Bickford, Jonathan Cassidy, Joseph Morse, Matt Pickard, the police department, Matt Bard, Shayna Blodgett, Jordan Brooks, Cameron Dubey, Casey Dugas, Chief Gould, Joseph Kibbe, Patrick Mank, Chad Morrison, Paul St. Amard, Matt Wilcox. We've got some reserve officers, I don't have their names, but I want to thank all the roster. Fire Department, Jeff O'Coin, Thomas Bagley, Amanda Duty, Nathan Gromick, Dean Harding, John Ketchin, Chief Leary, Trevor McKenzie, Eric Rude, Sam Solmetz, Timothy Warren, again, our call roster, our per diem people, I don't have that full list, but thank you. The library, Alyssa Patterson, Caitlin Kratka, I hope I got that name right, Pam Witham, Cheryl Walker and Marie Viles. That's our employees, it's an extensive list. Thank you all for what you do on a daily basis, I can't thank the work of all of them enough. Our boards and committees.
Do you miss, did you get Chad at Crossroads TV?
I did not.
He's not on the list.
Sorry, Chad.
So Chad, I know you're in the back room, forgive me.
Mr. Oz back there.
Thank you for all you do.
We do appreciate Chad.
Board of Appeals, Greg Lambert and Joel Burchard. Board of Assessment and Review, some of these are going to be multiple people, they're multiple committees, but Zach Kair, Ted Helberg, Lindsay Brand, Jeff Newbauer, Andrew Carlton. Our Budget Committee, again Zach, Zach Kair, Carol Ann Bagnulo, Shelley Rednicki, Reed Baldick, Bob Woodson, Mark Williamson, Jeff Tyner, Larry Hillman, Max Kenny. Building Committee, again Max Kenny, Zach Kair, Mark Williamson, Bob Sayzac, Peter Lawrence. Economic and Development, Carol Ann Bagnulo, Tim Forsman, Jeff Tyner, Mark Hume, Peter Lawrence, Stephanie Tippettow, Carrie Heichel, new member Joseph Menuski. Environmental Committee, Dr. Matt Townsend, Nate Saunders, Max Kenny, Bob Woodson, Kevin Kitchen. ICE Arena Steering Committee, Adam Lorette, Chris Perry, Jamie Boulet, Karen Moran, Dr. Townsend, Patrick Garett, Bradley McKenzie. Kennebec Sanitary District Trustees, Jack Stanley Jr. and Bruce Williams. Land Use Board of Appeals, Roger Jolyn, Greg Lambert, Tim Forsman, Veronique Keria, Alan Roy, Reed Baldick and Jeff Newbauer. Our Planning Board, Carol Ann Bagnulo, Kevin Violet, Carrie Heichel, Monica Town and Max Kenny. Kennebec Water District Trustees, Paul Fangimi and Nate Saunders. And our School Board, Max Kenny, Ryan Warren, Ray Davis Foltzen, Karen Kuziak, Heather Hussey, Rachel Hashi. I've missed anybody, I, I do apologize. It's a great list of people. It, it shows what it takes to run a town of this size and the dedication and commitment for 108 people plus, and I, I can't thank them enough. I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving and again, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the next regular meeting for the Fairfield Town Council will take place on Wednesday, December 17th, 2025, to be held as a hybrid meeting in council chambers via Zoom at 6:30 PM. At this time, we will recess, so council can sign documents and require signatures of council members.
Make a motion to recess.
Second.